I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. If you could please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to begin this evening with a recognition of our Carver Middle High School culinary team. So I see them in the audience, so I'd invite them up right now. That would be Tori Dibble, Peyton Liddell, Trevor Jokakis, TJ Booth, and Christopher Choi-Hallow, and Mr. Porter Lance, if they could come on up, that'd be great. So I'll give a little background information, then I'll turn the stage over to you guys, so let's just share about your experience a little bit. On Tuesday, February 12th, Tori Dibble, Peyton Liddell, Trevor Jokakis, TJ Booth, and Christopher Choi-Hallow represented Carver Middle High School at the 12th Annual Massachusetts Pro-Stat Invitational at Gillette Stadium. The Invitational was designed to have the students demonstrate their knowledge of the food service industry through a culinary and a management competition. Each portion of the competition was judged by leaders in the food service industry, and scoring was based on industry standards. After all their hard work, Peyton Liddell and Trevor Jokakis were awarded third place in the management portion of the competition at the state level, so congratulations to them. And Tori Dibble, Trevor Jokakis, TJ Booth, and Christopher Choi-Hallow were awarded first place in the state in the culinary competition. With their first place win, the culinary team will now represent the state of Massachusetts at the 2019 National Pro-Stat Invitational in Washington DC, May 8th through 10th. So congratulations to the team. And then I guess I'd invite any of the students, or Mr. Porter Lance, just to share a little about your experience at the state competition and what your thoughts are about going on to Nationals. We're obviously very excited to have you represent our school, both at the state level and the national level, and obviously you've done a tremendous job. And hopefully we're gonna bring home, we're gonna place at Nationals, that's the goal, right?
No place.
We're gonna win, and we're gonna win first place at Nationals. So everybody who wants to jump in, just wanna talk about the state competition first. Yeah, just to share, just to share your thoughts.
You know, if you could just, you could pick it up.
Pull the mic over, or... Well, there's really not a lot of nerves going into the state competition now at Nationals, and we rarely have a procedure. We practice very hard, and you know, we knew, we knew what the outcome was gonna be because we felt prepared, and we were gonna feel prepared going into Nationals as well. And really, we were just able to enjoy the experience while we were at Gillette, really take in everything, it was an awesome place to perform and stuff, so we all walked away happy with it, and we went in with the plan, came out, and now we know what we gotta do next.
Can you talk a little bit about the preparation? Because I think that's important for people to know, the amount of time and energy you've put into preparing for this type of competition.
Yep, definitely some 6:00 AM Saturday morning practices, thanks to chef over here. But, a lot of, a lot of doing experiments with what dishes are gonna work out best, what is gonna be able to be done in the appropriate time we're given. But once we find something that hits home with all of us, a dish that we think would, appetize the judges, we roll with that, and then we, everything with that, we just try to fit it in a tight timeframe, and make everything, you know, sanitize, everything kitchen-ready for it. So we have, we know all the rules that we're working with, and we do a good job with preparing to face all of them.
So what dish did you prepare, and if you can give us a little bit on the guidelines of, you know, what actually happens when you're at Gillette that day in terms of timeframes and all the things you do? I did not, I didn't attend this year, but I've attended in the past, so I've seen it, I've seen it occur. Chef's gonna take this over?
You know, you teach them so much and they don't wanna talk. I'm sitting down, 'cause I'm old. Well, we have one, the two different competitions. Management, Trevor and Peyton had to develop a business plan on an actual restaurant that could, could be feasible. And then they go through six different scenarios. They talk about their concept, their marketing, their, their menu, the whole overall operation, and some critical thinking. It's kind of impressive. I really liked the culinary, it's always a passion, but the management, this school produces some great presenters. They're phenomenal, honestly. And again, you're giving it to industry. One of the gentlemen in marketing actually sat there, his words were, "I spend thousands of dollars on conferences, it's a waste of my time. I show up and a 17-year-old teaches me a marketing plan. Gamification, who thought of that?" It's them. I'm not that smart, you know? But the cooking aspect is always a tougher one, for me, because we can plan so much on marketing, and we can break it down to a second. When you're live cooking, with there's a huge big screen in front of you, and then, who, who was it that walked by?
Matthew Slater.
Matthew Slater walks in and stands in front of you for 20 minutes, just looking at like this. He was giddy, it was bad. But we have to cook, we have to cook two, a three-quarters dinner for two people in one hour, using two gas burners and nothing else. It's impressive. The menu, which is gonna be completely different, because we're changing it for the Nationals, they did a seafood hash over roasted red pepper sauce with a nice sunny side egg. The entree was pistachio crusted lamb loin with a port wine reduction, whipped Yukon potatoes, vegetable bouquet. And then for dessert, they made a chocolate Bavarian, basil ice cream. I mean, it's, it's just, again, two burners, people in front of you, high school students. That's pretty impressive. And, and I'm fortunate, because they bought into the system. Just as you've allowed us to do it over these last 12 years to develop this program, they, they bought into it. They're gonna, they practice every single day. Tomorrow, we go back to the research and development, because our role goal is to win the state title. My goal is to win the national title. I'm not gonna stop till that happens, you know? And this year, I honestly think we have, we've always had good chances. Culinary, we've had decent chances. This year's culinary team should be on the stage again, hopefully in first place.
Well, congratulations for your accomplishments, and we look forward to a national championship. And hopefully, the committee will approve your field trip request to Washington DC at the end of the meeting.
I hope so. I, I just...
I don't know.
TJ, I don't know. Oh, I don't know.
So, seeing no one from Student Advisory Council, this is the, this is the general comments from the general public session of our meeting. But before we begin this, I'd just like to sort of say something. One of the things I'd like to start with is just read what the policy for public comment is, and then kind of give you a shift that we'd like to present tonight within that. So the policy, in order that all citizens who wish to be heard before a committee have a chance to ensure the ability of the committee to conduct the district's business in an orderly manner, the following rules and procedures are adopted. At the start of each regularly scheduled school committee meeting, individuals or the group representatives will be invited to address the committee. The length of the public participation segment shall be determined by the chairperson. So in that context, what I would like to present, and what I would present to the committee, is that the two big issues that we're going to address tonight are school choice and the budget. Our thoughts and our discussions led to the fact that with the amount of information that's out there, the best way to present that is what we would like to do to allow everybody to get the best speaking position they could in the context of what we're doing, that we will present, the superintendent will present his discussion on school choice, and then we will open it up for public comment on school choice. So anybody who would like to get up and make a public on school choice, comment on school choice, can do that at that time. Then we will have our committee vote and discussion, then we will move on to the budget. We'll allow the superintendent to present his presentation to you, and then you may get up and make any comments at that time. Then we will have the committee discussion and the committee vote on that. Seems the fairest way to allow everybody to get a chance to discuss at the most appropriate times, as opposed to opening up the floor now, where many questions or comments you have may be answered in the presentation that he has. So it seemed like the best format to do that. Is there anybody on the committee objective to that format?
No, I'm good. I'm good.
The second step, speakers will be allowed three minutes to present their material. The presiding chairperson may permit extension of this at that time. I would ask that you try to keep your comments to three minutes, as much as possible, please. That will allow everybody a chance to speak who would wish to. Topics for discussion must be limited to those items listed on the school committee meeting agenda for that evening. So I will allow, when I'm done with this list, that if anybody has anything other than school choice, or the budget, and would like to speak a public comment, I would ask that you do that upfront in the beginning. Number four, improper conduct and remarks will not be allowed. Deflamatory abusive remarks are always out of order. If a speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks, the chairperson may terminate the individual's privilege to address. If we are truly here to work together, then we are not here to attack. All remarks will be addressed through the chairperson in the meeting. When you make your comments, they are comments to the committee, it is not an interactive discussion with the committee. Speakers may offer such objective criticisms of the school operations and programs as concern them, but in a public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel, nor against any member of the school community. Under most circumstances, administrative channels are the proper means for disposition of legitimate complaints involving staff members. And number seven, written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the committee before or after the meeting, for the committee members to review and consider at an appropriate time. That one's probably less applicable, so as long as you keep it pretty close to three minutes, we're comfortable with what you've got there. Because you didn't give it to us before, and we're gonna vote before or after the meeting, so any comments that need to come should come at that appropriate time. That is the policy of the committee. I hope everybody can accept and understand that. And I would ask, and I would also ask the EAPC actually, if they would like to make a comment upfront, or if they would rather wait and comment within the timeframes of the other discussions. I'd kind of leave that up to you guys.
Well, um, did Jeremy turn his... I would like to make a comment, Tom, is that right, to make it prior?
So, just before you do though, Tammy, does anyone have any comments for general public that is not on the topic of school choice or budget? Please just recognize yourself, Istoff.
Jim Hoffman, H. Great Middle Drive. I'm also a member of the rec committee, and I just, basically we just wanted to update the school committee. The rec committee, we're not ready to adopt the rates that the school committee approved at their last meeting on February 25th. We're gonna meet with the youth leagues on Wednesday to discuss this, and give them an opportunity to digest the fees. And we have two issues that we're trying to help them with. One is figuring out if they, if the parents have one or two, if their children are playing one or two sports per season, how will that affect them? In other words, like my son's playing flag football and baseball, so there's two additional fees we're gonna have to incur, so we have to figure that out financially. And also, what the leagues will have to additionally charge to cover the new field use fee. So as a voice of these leagues, we feel it's only fair to discuss this a little bit more. So, I know you, the school committee voted on it last week, we won't be voting on it this week. We're gonna take a week or two to digest it, so. I know we wanted to have the same fees, we're trying to just work together, but we just didn't feel comfortable at this time to vote on it and to adopt it right away. So we just wanted to let everybody know, I know a couple of people we spoke to, but I wanted to make sure the whole committee knew that upfront.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Johnson.
Hey. Thank you, good evening. First, 'cause I do have some written, written, written letters that I would like to disperse to the school committee, and with that, I just, I guess we're just kind of frustrated because there are a lot of people that had prepared to come and at the time, and so this, I just wanted to put it up there, I don't know, I guess it's difficult to get the word out there, and how the, the order of the agenda is gonna come out, but I, I am concerned about that. Because obviously, there are a lot of people here who do wanna voice their opinion, and I'm not gonna take up a lot of time, because I wanna make sure that everyone has the time. But I do have here, and I really hope that the members of the school committee really have an opportunity to really look and see what, what, what is going on in, in our school district right now, and look at the amount of concern. And with that, I would just like to pass them over, I guess, and if, hold on. And, and just with that, to let the school committee know that I have had multiple people say they had difficulty in getting emails sent to the addresses, and so that's why they had shared this with me, and especially the one on top. So, I appreciate your time, thank you.
So, I think by the format we established, everybody who has something to say will get a chance to speak and be heard. I just wanna make sure that the superintendent's presentations are made before you do that, because those presentations may answer a lot of questions or concerns that you have. So we need to move on to the approval of minutes?
We, we're gonna take items out of order possibly, considering moving, I thought we discussed moving school choice and school budget up to the top of the agenda, so we address those issues right away.
Minutes, that's...
Whatever, your, your will, Chairperson.
Let's get rid of the minutes, please, and...
I'll make a motion to approve the February 13th joint meeting of the school committee and board of slackmen minutes.
Second.
Motion made in second, and any changes, comments, or questions?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous?
I'll make a motion...
Four, four and one abstention.
I'll make a motion to approve the February 25th regular session minutes.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, any questions, comments, or changes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Also four to one abstention? And...
So then I would recommend we move on to the school choice topic and the school budget presentation, if the committee wills that that's the direction we go in next. Yep. Okay, school choice. Last year, the committee approved school choice for kindergarten in grades six through nine, with a total of five slots at each grade level. In general, the district receives $5,000 per student who school choice is in, and loses $5,000 for each student from Carver who might choice out. For some special education students, we receive additional monies to support their special education needs. Currently, we have 36 students who choice into the district, and I provide the committee with a list of, a link by grade level of the number of students in each grade. Last year, we opened an additional 25 slots, and as a result of the opening of additional 25 slots, we enrolled 16 additional school choice students. The addition of these students has been spread over several grades, and has had a minimal impact on class size. And last, at our last meeting, the school committee actually asked for members of the community to send them questions through email. And there's a series of questions that were kind of common and themed, that I'm gonna address either in either/or presentation, whether it's a school choice presentation or the school budget presentation. There was a school, there was a question about school choice that was in a couple emails that were sent to the members of the school committee, so I'd like to address those questions now. In essence, the question was, what type of students are we gonna attract? We may have, this was the question. If, if there's a concern that there's limited offerings, and there's a concern that we might be reducing offerings, which we're gonna get to in the budget presentation, maybe we're not gonna get additional school choice students, so we shouldn't rely on them, is kind of the question. The second part of that is that there was a concern that maybe, a concern about maybe who are the students who'd be choosing into our district, and what has our past history been with school choice students, in terms of their, their being members of the community. So in response to those two questions, you know, ultimately, last year, we opened up an additional 25 slots, and we filled 16 of them. So 16 students made a choice during the school year to offer into our school district. I will say, when students choice in, we haven't given them a questionnaire as to why did you decide to school choice with us? We've just accepted them into our school district as those slots were available. I mean, as an example, and we're gonna get this in the budget presentation, we actually, we've had five students choice in since January 1st. So we've had a number of students coming into the district at the middle high school level, where we have slots available. In terms of, so I think next year, we're gonna be offering very comparable service delivery for students, and that we're gonna get to that in the budget presentation. This year, we had 16 of 25 slots filled that were opened up. If we use that same kind of math of 65%, you know, we open up additional slots, I think we can say that students are gonna choice in. And I think we do have the opportunity to bring additional students into the district, which has a monetary, a positive monetary value for us. You know, ultimately, as I said, we have 36 students choosing into the district. Right now, we only have eight students choosing out. So school choice is a positive for us in terms of cash flow, which helps us offset our budget and deal with budgetary concerns. And I feel like the space and the opportunity is there to increase our school choice offerings as a way to supplement our budget. So that's why I'm gonna make a recommendation that the committee approves school choice, which would plays a part into our budget presentation, which is coming next. In terms of the concerns about students we may be attracting through school choice, I just looked at some basic data in terms of discipline offenses and number of students. You know, of the, of the 36 students currently enrolled in the Carver Public Schools as school choice students, 31 of them have had no discipline incidents during this school year. Five of those students have had some sort of disciplinary infraction, and obviously I can't go into a lot of detail, I don't wanna, I try to identify any specific student. But of those five students, two of the five have had one minor offense this year. So really, so far, our perspective of, that, that's data to support that concept, and talking to the administrators in the district, the, who might be dealing with concerns that the school choice students have, as well as the teachers, is that in general, our school choice students have, have become regu, are, are members of the community just like any other student, and have had the same successes as any other student who school chooses into the district, or maybe this, maybe, maybe some of the same concerns. But school choice from that perspective has not, had a negative impact on the school culture and climate. So, based on that, that information, you know, what we'd like, what we're, what we're recommending tonight, is I'm recommending to expand school choice to grades 10 through 12, which would expand our total available slots in school choice for next year by 20 students. I'm also suggesting that we continue to have five kindergarten students as a school choice number. At this time, our K registration for next year is consistent with past years, so I'm comfortable with continuing to offer five kindergarten slots. Supporting this allotment allows the possibility of, beyond the 36 students we already have, that we could have an additional 20 students. So this would allow us to use more school choice monies to offset our budget. So it would be my recommendation that the committee approve five choice, school choice slots be available in kindergarten and grades six through 12 for the 2019-2020 school year.
So, yep, I would open it up, if anybody'd like to make any public comments on school choice at all? Seeing nobody moving, yep?
Deborah Cologne, 15 Bradford Boulevard. The only question I have is, do you have any data on how many kids have left the school district, and are you supplementing that with the school choice offerings?
At this time, we have eight students school choice in the district, this year.
I'm sorry? I didn't hear what you said.
Oh, you're asking how many students have left?
Have left.
In...
Ninth grade?
A variety, a variety of ways.
No, I, do you have numbers on how many have left?
Are you asking about school choice?
I, I'm asking if you're supplementing school choice offerings with students who have left.
No, we're, we're offering more school, more school choice offerings, because it allows the opportunity for more students to come into the district.
Okay, do you have any data on the students that have left in each grade?
So I, I don't know, so, again, with the public comment, it's really about comments that you have.
It's not a dialogue.
Okay.
It's not an interactive questioning session right now.
Okay.
That's not really the objective here. If you do have questions...
I will say, in, my response is, in the November school committee meeting, we gave a detailed description of every student who went in and out of the district, detailing by where they went, where they're enrolled. So we do that every November. So the, so the Novembers, I've been the superintendent, we have done a detailed reporting out on every student in Carver, and where they may be choosing to attend a different school.
Okay, if that makes sense.
So I, I think... That information is available.
So November, you said?
I don't have it, I don't have it in front of me this evening, but it is available.
So my only comment would be that I hope that we're not doing that, we're not replacing students that are leaving with options of school choice students.
But what I was gonna say though, if that is a question that you have, I think responding to the policies, if you call them, that is data that they have together that they can get for you, absolutely, yep.
Great, that was it, that's the only question I had.
And to answer that question is, the, the school will get, the town actually gets chapter 70 funds, the state deducts kids we have going to other districts, right out of that chapter 70 allotment. So it's just less money that we get right out of that.
You lose money with the students that left, thank you, that was the only question, thank you.
So I would also ask, gentlemen, then, if we are to keep this a non-interactive questioning situation, that we don't... Any others?
If loud enough, can I just talk from back here?
No, sir, I actually need you to step up to the mic, if you don't mind, please. Just introduce yourself and...
Austin Bell, 41 Washington Park.
Say it into the mic for the TV.
Austin Bell, 41 Washington Park. So, obviously, some of you know me, I graduated last year, I'm not fully aware of what's been going on about the whole thing, I'd like to be more aware though. So I'm hearing about school choice, and I understand that that involves students from other towns, living in other towns, coming into Carver. But would, and like, so you can obviously tell me to sit down if this is gonna get into what you just didn't want it to, but on, the tap and cap programs, those budgets, and other budgets such as the art, art programs, would those budgets be affected by paying for kids from other towns that don't necessarily need to be here, because there are other towns that they could very well be in?
So, so... No, no, because we're not answering questions right now, so I just wanna be clear on that. But I think your questions will be answered within the budget presentation, alright?
Justin Carpenter, 55 Woodhaven Street. I know there's an adversity to questions right now, but this is more logistical, something that I probably should know that I don't. Do students who elect to come to Carver in the school choice program, is there any information about public transportation provided for them, or is that on their own to find a way to get to school?
They have, they have to find a way to get to school.
They have to, okay. So my main concern with that is I think it's great, the idea of opening up Carver for other students. If Carver has a program that another student really wants to elect into, I think that barring them is not great, but to only have it be for students who can find their own way to school is really restricting the opportunity for other students in other districts. There is never an opportunity for me, without the help with friends throughout school, for me to get a ride to school. I had to take the bus. My parents both worked before school started and after school ended, so there's no opportunity for me to take the time to get to school. So I think with school choice, if you're gonna have students find their own way to get to school, it's gonna be really hard for some students who might really want the opportunity to come to Carver, who can't find that opportunity. And that's all, I just, I want that out there, that it's gonna be harder for low-income families to wanna come to Carver, and it's gonna be harder for students who need the opportunity but can't get it.
Thank you, Justin. Seeing no one else moving up, we will close that session and move on to committee discussion.
I'm for the expansion, so...
Well, are there any questions or comments from Mr. Neef at all, in his presentation?
I'll be honest, we've never, I, I don't think we have, it really discussed the transportation, so it was a pretty valid question, I...
So, school choice regulations law is that the district does not have to provide transportation, unless it's in IEP right here. So, we do have a student, two students who are, school choice students who are in the IEP that we bill directly back for. We set up the service for them, we contract out for it, we're able to get that money back directly. But if it's not in the IEP, the school district is not responsible for transportation on that. I will say, I do know other districts who have a lot of kids in one area, say Plymouth, for example, you can technically set money up to send a bus to pick students up in Plymouth. Honestly, right now, from where we stand with our amount of school choice students, it'd be a net loss for us to add a bus on for any district. That's not to say, five years down the road, if we do implement these changes, and we have all of a sudden 30, 40 kids living in one town, that we couldn't look at adding that on.
Yeah, I, I think it would, could've, like the gentleman mentioned, really incentivize kids if they had that opportunity. So I would love to know what that breakdown would be, as far as how many we'd need in a certain town to make that cost-effective?
Well, I think...
Just to learn from it. I think is a really valid point, so I...
Future discussion.
Yeah, I guess, so do you wanna wait, would you rather wait until, I mean, we've been offering school choice openings, we haven't even filled all of our slots yet.
Yeah, I think that's a future discussion.
Future discussion, but it's a discussion that we have.
Well, because the only town I think where it only looks to really apply right now is Wareham, where there were 21 students, but, but that could also be sparse over, over K through 12, so...
Exactly, so you could have, exactly.
Or K through middle school now.
Or K through middle school now. So, you, it's not the same bus, it's not the same time, kind of thing, so. If, I think, I think you're right, if, if the numbers ever did cough or something like that.
It makes sense to look at, exactly.
So, just to reiterate that, if there is a student brought in that, that has a disability or needs special assistance, is, is.
If it's on the IEP, yep, we are required to set up transportation. The district does not pay for that. We bill back the sending district for that cost.
So, it's all billed back in like a quarterly session, or?
It gets adjusted at the end of the year, so honestly, you go all year upfront in the cost, but by the end of the year, and usually in June's school choice payment, we get a full reimbursement for that.
Any other questions, comments?
And that is in addition, James.
You know what?
That's, that's in addition to any, anything in the IEP that qualifies as a special ed service, we can bill back for that, that we get that money reimbursed. It's not an even dollar amount, but it puts it into like the same formula as our, our school, our, our circuit breaker payment comes in, that we get money back towards everything that's in the IEP on a school choice student.
So, I, I'd like to apologize for that because we kind of had our discussion before a motion was made and seconded, and that probably should have been done first.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty additional slots for school choice.
So, you have to, the motion has to include grade level and number of slots because we have to report that to DESI.
I did say additional slots.
And, yes, by grade level, you have to say, five school choice slots in kindergarten, grade six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
Okay, twenty additional slots in grade six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve for the.
And kindergarten.
And kindergarten.
And five slots in each grade level, sorry, Andrew.
Five slots.
Because otherwise, we're saying we're opening up twenty slots in all those grade levels.
Did you get all that, Gina?
You got it, Gina?
Word for word?
All right. I don't know what they said.
I'll second it.
So, any, any further discussion or questions on that topic at all? No, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous, five-zero? Moving on to the budget presentation.
All right, so Brad and I are going to break this presentation into two parts. Brad's just going to give a summary of, by state function code, and then I'm going to take us through where we are in terms of offering a, a level service budget and what proposals we'd have for any reductions that may occur, or really, it's really, it's really more restructuring than reduction. So, Brad's going to take the first part of the presentation, give us an update. This is very similar information that was presented to the committee in January, but as the public, as part of the public hearing, we just wanted to go through the overall budget by function code. Once Brad does that, then I will take it back and look at where we were, where we were as of February twenty-fifth, and what changes we've made in terms of our presentation and recommendations since January twenty-fifth. I would say, sorry, February twenty-fifth.
So, these are just the recap of the quick DESI function codes. One thousand series is district-wide leadership and administration. The two thousand series is instructional services, which includes school building administration. Three thousand series is other services such as athletics and transportation. Four thousand is operations, facilities. Five thousand is fixed charges such as benefits, and the nine thousand is all out-of-district programs, including out-of-district tuitions, voc aggies, virtual high school students that we send. So, the one thousand series, these numbers, the FY nineteen column now is updated as of the last school committee meeting in January, I believe, we did budget transfers, so this is the most up-to-date for FY nineteen that we have. This line item is representing a two-point-five percent decrease. That's based off legal services dropping for next fiscal year, there's no contract negotiations going on, and also Scott finished his new superintendent's induction program, so that is a small cost off of that as well. The two thousand instructional series is a two-point-six percent increase. This includes professional development, curriculum, technology, equipment, and licenses, principals, teachers, and guidance expenses. The addition on here is a point-three pre-K. It's entirely offset in our budget by adding on slots for our preschoolers. Special ed contracted services line is increasing by fifty thousand dollars based on a pre-K student that we have. There's no increase to the elementary, middle, high school supply budget line items. The salaries are adjusted for FY nineteen and twenty. Retirements and replacements are included. There's forty thousand dollars embedded in this for teacher lane changes with the new Masters seventy-five and just general mid-year increases, or I should say, lane changes. And there's also a ten thousand dollar increase budgeted for tuition reimbursement. Three thousand series is transportation health and athletic expenses. The big drivers here are, are out-of-district transportation. We're funding homeless transportation at twenty-two thousand, a slight increase from FY nineteen, and sped contracted services for out-of-district transportation is a hundred and ninety-two. And just to point out here, the one ninety-two is fully allocated, there is not any extra money built into that. So, if we do have a change in an out-of-district placement for one student, we do have to add on transportation costs, there's no money in there to cover this at the moment. It could go either way, some, some students move to tuition programs that we have other students in, so we can able to drop that, and we can combine their routes, but just where we are right now. The town does have the reserve account set up that we can access money to cover that expense. And regular, at trans, uh, regular transportation dropped by ten thousand dollars, and that's based off of a route elimination that we had during this current school year. Four thousand, this includes utilities, buildings, grounds, expenses. There's thirty thousand dollars built in for natural gas and electric. The big driver, I know we mentioned before, was the elementary school electric. That number has backed down to original budget figures for the new building, so we're back in line with where that was originally projected, which is great news because we were trending at a very wrong direction with our original first few months, but systems are up and running now, and we have efficiencies going, so that's one positive. And we also have increased twenty thousand dollars for the added field maintenance at the middle high school and elementary school levels. Five thousand series is fixed charges. This includes retirement contributions, health insurance, life insurance, and all other insurances we have. A nine percent is proposed for healthcare right now, and we have Plymouth County Retirement Board, which actually was a thirty thousand dollar reduction. Good news for this year, bad news is that can jump up for our assessment anywhere from fifty to a hundred grand at any given time. So, we'll take the positive this year, but that's just the item that we always need to keep an eye out for, and it's an actuarial assessment, so there's really no control on what we have, that's just what we're told we have to pay.
Before we go on to the next slide, I don't know if you want to take a couple of minutes to, since Ryan, healthcare. One of the questions that came through from a number of people was healthcare being on the school's side of the operating budget. And then there was some information that we'd like to share about that. And there was also a question related to that in terms of making that decision of, the town often states that they have one of the highest rates, whereas the, the school gets seventy percent of the town's money. So, we, and there's a question about how does that work, and how does healthcare tie into that, and is that a fair number of comparison? The committee had several questions along that line, so I think it might, since this is the healthcare portion of our increases, to talk about at least the healthcare piece and how that operates, and then talk about net school spending a little bit.
We'll do that, Dan.
Oh, net school spending, Dan, okay, yeah.
Just so, just for health insurance, health insurance is budgeted the same way for the town and school. You guys have seen the master plan before, the ten-year forecast. It, it backs out, it adds up all of our revenues we intake, it subtracts out all fixed expenses that the town uses as fixed expenses, and then that gives us the operational budget between school and town. That's the number that gets broken out between, let's just say, seventy and thirty percent. It's not exact, but that's just rounding up. Both of those, then, you have to take out our health insurance, so it's, it's, it's not, health insurance for the town is not above the line. It gets broken out the same way it does for the school as of our allocation. So, for the school, for example, we're taking in, let's just say, twenty-four million, and the town's taking in ten million. That is the number you start with, both then have to subtract out the health insurance. So, it's on a level playing field. There is no advantage right now for us to move health insurance because it's not, the town would have to do that as well, and it'd actually be a losing case for us because it adjusts that formula in a direction we don't want it to go in.
But the, the question was really, there was some question as to whether the town does pull out health insurance from their operating budgets as well.
But they, they budget the same way we do. You get your, your pie, and then how you break down that pie, that's health insurance is included in there.
Thanks, Brad.
Yep. And we'll touch on net school spending at the last slide. The nine thousand series is all out-of-district programs. You can see this is almost a thirty percent increase. This includes costs for students that Carver we know are fiscally responsible for, and it includes proposed tuition increases. I'll dive more into this on the next one. Hopefully, it's kind of scratchy on there. There's, there's a couple of big numbers I want to highlight here. I won't dive into all of these, but if you look at column C, and you look at just the top piece, where it totals to one-point-two million, that was FY nineteen's original back in February, and we created our budget, this is what we had, thought our, our special ed expenditures would be for all out-of-district placements. When you, just totaling that up, we, we included fifty thousand dollars of tuition that we take in from another town for our programs here in Carver, which is separate from school choice, it's just an agreement that we have that they will pay us fifty thousand dollars for this student to attend our program. Then we took off four-hundred-twenty-six thousand dollars for circuit breaker, included in what we originally had in the operational budget, gave us our one-point-two. If you follow along in the, the shaded column right to the right of that, in column D, actuals are coming in this year for almost one-point-four million dollars. That represents a hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollar increase that we had mid-year that we never anticipated, that's just actual costs of what they came in at. This is money that we have to utilize the town for, which goes through those reserve accounts to offset this in our budget. If we didn't have that money, we'd be going into our reserve accounts because we all can sit here and say, I don't think, none of us would want to cut a program mid-year to make up. So, we would use, utilize one-time money most likely to offset our budget, but that would leave a short in our circuit breaker amount that we now utilize this year. So, that's always the change, and that's why the town, thankfully, has set up those accounts. But realistically, how, how this impacts.
Can you just, can you just touch briefly, or I will, on why that change occurs? You know, so you had a hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollar swing, people may be saying, how, how did you have a hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollar swing, based on what you budgeted?
There's a couple components to it. We have had a few students who have been, a parent has moved into Carver, so what that happens, that is it becomes a cost share, the two districts where the parents reside in split the cost for that tuition cost. We've got a few this year that actually, that were two-hundred-thousand-dollar placements that left Carver responsible for a hundred thousand of it, that were anticipated. Again, it's, it's kind of a crazy system, but sometimes you win, sometimes you lose. I always feel like we're on the losing end of it. But any, any given time, that could happen to you, and you are responsible for fifty percent of that cost. If there's anything else you want to add?
Yeah, and just saying that, basically, we set, the agreement with the reserve account that we have with the town at this time is that we set our costs as of February first, and then, and it's a hard number based on what we're projecting on February first of a school year. So, this budget has a hard number based on what we're, what we projected as of February first. But the reality is, with special education placements, they change all the time, whether it's students moving in, or a student going out, or a student coming back, sometimes we bring students back into the district, there's always a lot of movement there. So, it's hard to have that number be solid. In this past year, the number was a hundred-and-eighty-three thousand over what we had projected as of last February. And it wasn't because of poor projecting, it's just the reality of, of what happens with those accounts, there has to be some flexibility there. And, and right now, our flexibility is to use the town's reserve accounts that they've been funding through free cash at, at that town meeting, that's how the town's been, been doing that. But then what happens is we have to rule that cost into our next budget.
We're trying to catch on.
Yeah, so go ahead, so I'm not taking Brad's thunder for the next piece.
So, if you look below that, in the, the bottom column of C, the FY nineteen original, these three line items are just what's in our operational budget. So, in our operational budget costs, there was seven-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars for FY nineteen in the original approved budget. If you look at two columns over, in column E, FY twenty for proposed right now has nine-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, so that's a two-hundred-and-eight thousand dollar increase alone to our operational budget that takes away from the five-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars that we get in new money. So, before we even talk about utility increases, salary increases, what, over one-third of our money is already gone, and that's just based on operational costs.
And then you add the insurance piece in.
Exactly, and this is before insurance, and this is really before you look at any other expense, and we know we have a lot of them on the school side.
And the reason we highlight that is, and this, this discussion becomes a larger point that we've been trying to make at our meetings continuously, and I know that people are advocating for in the state, I know a lot of people in this room advocating for at the state level, I'm going to touch on later on that I'm going to a, a legislative hearing on school finances on March twenty-second, that they've invited superintendents to go and speak, and I'm going to talk about Carver's, where we stand on this issue. But ultimately, the Foundation Budget Review Commission from the state level said that the current funding system on the state level does not properly fund healthcare and special education. And, and if you look at our, our budget issues, those are part of our biggest drivers. And it's not because, from my perspective, it's not because the district is mismanaging any of those things, it's just the realities of the cost. And the cost is rising at increasingly higher level, and the funding doesn't match that. So, you know, the reality of a two-hundred-and-eight thousand dollar cost on our operational budget for special education, we don't receive the funding at the state level to support that even through circuit breaker. And so, one of our points of advocacy is, circuit breaker is the, the way in which the state funds costs over forty-four thousand dollars, so the, any kind of out-of-district placement, the town has the first responsibility of that up to a certain amount, and then after that, the state actually refunds you one year later. The state law, their, their requirement is to fund at seventy-five percent, they generally do not, generally, they fund somewhere between sixty-seven and seventy-two percent. And it, it, my, I guess I just want to highlight that point of, at the state level, support in terms of the increasing cost of special education and healthcare, which are the biggest drivers on our budget, biggest impact on our budget, is just not being appropriately funded. We all need to advocate at the state level for that to improve, or otherwise, we're going to be in a cycle that's going to be hard for us to break down over time. And, and Brad's highlighting that, that piece here. We didn't, we didn't give the exact number on our healthcare, what the healthcare change costs us, but if you look at healthcare and, and, and special ed, that's eating up a, a lot of what the proposed increase that, that the board has selected to pass as the schools, that they, that they had supported as terms of the school's operating budget.
Healthcare is right around a hundred-and-eighty thousand, at nine percent. But just to go back to this, just to highlight that two oh eight number again, so why it's, it's, it's great because we get the one-time money during the year to cover that cost, but it kind of masks it, and now we're stuck dealing with it in the second year. And that's why, kind of, it's, it's a huge, it's a huge cost that we have to pick up. It, realistically, we have the issue in FY nineteen, we're able to use one-time money to offset that, and then it becomes a reality of our, of our operational budget the following year. Any questions on that, if, just so it's clear?
How much is in the special ed reserve account right now?
I would say it's one-eighty.
And what's the projected?
One-twenty-five.
One-twenty-five.
I think the proposal in the time being war is one-twenty-five.
One-fifteen.
I know the, the aim was two-hundred thousand, I think it was the aim of the town at first.
So, let's just to recap our offsets that are built into the budget, between grant two-forty and three oh five, we budgeted six-hundred-and-fifty thousand for both elementary and middle high school paraprofessionals. For circuit breaker right now, we have four-hundred thousand as an offset. For tuitions in, we have zero based on the student that we did have coming through one of our programs graduating. Preschool fees is fifty thousand. Again, this was right around thirty-five last year, this is now up fifteen based on the new classroom opening that we have. School choice, as built into this budget, is three-hundred thousand. Next slide, we'll talk a little bit more of that, about how you guys approving our open more slots and what that does for us. Athletics, at one-fifty a sport, gives us sixty-three thousand, that's direct offset to middle high school athletics. Middle high school intramurals is two-hundred dollars per year. This goes directly to revolving salaries and offsetting transportation, and then the parking fee goes directly into middle high school graduation fees.
So, this kind, this, that was kind of a review of what was presented before in January and all numbers we've talked about before, and, and based on that information, where we were as of February twenty-fifth, we were projecting an operational shortfall as compared an operational shortfall as compared to the number from the town of $234,985. Since that time, we said there's, things are always moving, things are always changing in terms of the budget structure, and we're going to talk about that a little bit at the end of this presentation. But based on that, we have some recommendations tonight to bring us down to a number that would be the same as the town's number. The first would be to budget health insurance at 8%, which is a $30,000 savings, what we originally said. So Brad said in the original budget proposal, health insurance, we were budgeting at 9%. The group that we're part of, and Brad can add on to this if he wants to, if he feels like, and let's make a misstep here.
I'll take it. NFP oversees our health insurance. We're part of the Gateway Group, Health Group. Right now, if they had passed it last meeting, they would have had it at 8%. They wanted one more month of claim history, which is how they base that percentage, before they made that official to vote. So they all, if they passed it that day, it would have been 8%. They wanted one more month. They're 99% sure that it'll pass at 8. So I'm asking you guys to acknowledge that we're passing a budget with a deficit in that line item. And if it does come in at 9, we can come back at the next school committee meeting to discuss how we can fund that. But I'm very confident that that'll be at 8%, and we're comfortable passing that right now.
And then, we looked at our current school choice enrollment, and as I said, we've actually had five additional students choice in since January 1st. So looking where we are currently, the original offset was set at $300,000. But based on the money we're going to bring in this year, we can actually, before we added the seats, so before the school committee even voted to add seats this evening, we said, based on the five additional students coming in after January 1st, that we could increase our current offset based on the money we're bringing in this year, which we'll be using for next year's budget, by $25,000. So we took $25,000 off that number based on having 36 students currently in school choice.
And not one as a senior.
Yeah, so although, right, there are no seniors in school choice, so those are all people, if they stay enrolled, that money will go forward. So what's changed in our presentation in terms of meeting that number, we're going to talk about, and I'm going to detail these in a second, but we're going to talk about a restructuring of the Director of Literacy position, with the goal of not changing services for students by the reading specialists, and a reduction of our position at the middle high school from a full-time position to a .5 position. If those two things were approved, our shortfall would be 72,441. But based on the school committee just approving school choice, and increased school choice in kindergarten and 10 through 12, plus we already have 6, 7, 8, 9, that it opens up an additional 20 seats for us, and that that could, those additional 20 seats, we could use that money to meet the rest of the shortfall of 72,000. So we would fill the rest of the shortfall, 72,441, based on the school committee just approving school choice. So what we're proposing in terms of a budget, would have the restructure of the Director of Literacy position, which I'll talk about more in detail in a second, and the reduction of the art position at the middle high school from full-time to .5. So let's do restructure of Director of Literacy first. So our current model, we have a Director of Literacy who has a range of district-wide administrative responsibilities, including oversight of reading curriculum and teacher support at the elementary school. We also have three reading specialists who provide direct services to approximately 160 elementary students based on testing data in need. So what would that, how would that look differently next year, and how are we saying that we would change the structure to still service the students in the same way? So the proposed restructure is we'd have one full-time reading specialist slash reading coach. We'd have two full-time reading specialists, and then we'd actually add an additional reading specialist position part-time, .4 reading specialist. The restructure would allow the reading specialist to service an equivalent number of students based upon need. And that the person who's the reading specialist reading coach would have the responsibility of curriculum and teacher support that is currently under the role of the Director of Literacy. Ultimately, what we're proposing here is the Director of Literacy would lose all of the administrative responsibilities. So on the next slide, we talk about what those administrative responsibilities are. Would be as the ELL Director. It would be as Title I, overseeing Title I. Observations and evaluations of staff, professional development, though the reading coach specialist would still have involvement in professional development. General administrative duties, which is attending all the op meetings, attending regular administrative meetings. So the thought process here is those administrative responsibilities, the elimination of a district-wide administrative position, would fall to other administrators in the district, including the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Technology, including the superintendent, including the building principals, that that, though, in essence, we're eliminating the administrator, but our goal is to keep the teacher. And by adding the .4, another .4 teacher, adding a staff member, we believe that we can provide the same level of service to students in terms of direct intervention, with that person just losing the administrative responsibilities to other members of the administrative team. In terms of art, .5 art teacher at the middle high school. Currently, there's 46 students in grades 9 through 12 enrolled in our classes. Projected enrollment for next year is 68 students. The current position consists of eight sections plus VHS, virtual high school responsibility. We've shifted that virtual high school responsibility into the general budget. We're not going to assign that to a teacher. Historically, that's been a teaching section at the middle high school. Different people have taught virtual high school classes over the year, and how it trades off for you is that if you have a teacher teach a virtual high school's course, that opens up 30 virtual high school sections for your students. You can not have a teacher teach a virtual high school course, and you can just pay for 30 slots, which has a cost associated with it. And that decision was actually made, it's actually separate from this, the decision was made to move, remove the virtual high school position from the art teacher at the middle high school. It's actually been a position that sometimes through the years, even back in the years I was the principal, it was always kind of, who's going to teach the virtual high school course? And we'd have discussions with department chairs, and we'd look at enrollment, we'd look at what people might have availability to do that. And it was always, sometimes it was always, we had to really sell it to a staff member to say, we want you to take on this virtual high school course. And they would take that course on, it would be a reduction of one of their courses. So a teacher in general at the high school teaches five classes. If the teacher's a virtual high school teacher, they would teach four classes and be responsible for a virtual high school class. And as I said, over time, we've just found that to be a difficult position to maintain. It's shifted from department to department, different people have done the virtual high school course. Honestly, it's generally gone where there's been lower enrollment. We've reached out to teachers and said, look, there's a lower enrollment in your sections, and you have the space to teach that course, so it's something you'd be willing to do. And so we've decided to just take that off the table for the teachers and incorporate the cost of having 30 virtual high school seats into the regular budget. So that is actually part of the regular budget. But we're still maintaining the 30 virtual high school seats. The .5 position would teach six sections or three classes each semester. It's historically what we've done with .5 positions at the middle high school. And right now, we're saying that six sections will be able to accommodate the projected enrollment for the next year. The other point I want to make in terms of the art program, in terms of, you know, I think there's been a lot of discussion about level service, and we're trying to present the budget type, we're saying that our services for students will still be available and will not change. So we modified what we wanted to do with the Director of Literacy position by adding that .5 reading specialist, and saying that based on that model of adding a person, that we're actually going to be able to meet the needs with the elimination of the Director of Literacy, with those administrative responsibilities going to other administrators. And for the art position, this is a, you know, it's not saying I want to reduce the art position, but the reality is, if you look at the numbers over the years, it has, the numbers have not supported a full-time position in art in the middle high school based on student interest and student need. This is the last four years of enrollment in art at the middle high school. There was 53 students, 43 students, 62 students, 46 students. Those enrollment numbers don't support a full-time position. If you really think what's being proposed here this evening, we're proposing the same number of teachers next year, except a reduction by .1. Because we're, in essence, shifting a .5 art teacher to a .4 reading specialist. So we're shifting a .5 art teacher at the middle high school to a .4 reading specialist at the elementary school. Otherwise, our full-time teacher equivalency would be the same next year. And we're proposing the reduction of an administrative position. So the administrative responsibilities are being taken away from the position of Director of Literacy and being put out into the other administrators in the district. So what does that still leave in play? As we said, there's always opportunities here. Things, the reality is, you know, it's one of the tough parts about budgeting in April. I know the town decided to go to an April town meeting, I don't know, several years ago, five, six years ago. I know Mr. Dunham was here, he could probably tell us when that was. You know, we have to make decisions early on in terms of when town meeting is. And the reality is, between April 15th and June 30th, things change. And after we pass a budget or vote a number, whatever that number happens to be after the school committee does that, things can change. So we have to look at things that could still change. And this is where I want to talk a little bit about, or address the concept of, we've been advocating the development of a career pathways program at the middle high school, changing some of our offerings, specifically adding a technology teacher. At this time, we've taken that technology teacher off the list because we're looking at maintaining our current staff. And so we've moved that as a request, and what we're looking at is saying, okay, we still have things in play. We could have things that could change between today, March 11th. We have things that can change after April 22nd, 23rd, 24th, the town meeting, that could result in us still adding on the technology position next year. We can't budget it today because we don't know, but those opportunities are out there. There are some opportunities of things that are still in play. So, well, the health insurance change, we're already putting that in. Vocational tuitions, we don't know what students are going to be accepted and attend vocational Aggie schools until May 1st.
Yeah, they get, they have to, they apply March, they get accepted April, I think they have till May 2.
So our number in there is a projection. Sometimes that number comes in as a positive for us and could save us, each of those vocational tuitions are $20,000. So if we project out that we're going to have five students attend vocational school and we only have three, that's a $40,000 savings. And also, we could have additional staff movement. The reality is, there's staff movement, and we don't know what that staff movement's going to be, we're not aware of any today. All the retirements that we know of are in the budget, so we've moved those in, and I'm not even saying retirements, I'm just saying, there can be staff movement. And so there could be staff movement between now and July 1st that could impact us in a positive way to give us opportunities to change our budget outlook. So we're still advocating that we believe we want to move in a direction of developing these career pathways. And the other piece of that is, we're also, we're just in the developmental stage of that. We think we have to, we have to get, do a better job in terms of at the middle high school getting staff on board presenting what our real plan is. We have to do a better job to the school committee presenting what our plan is. We have some general ideas of the direction we want to move in, but ultimately, our goal is to change a little bit of the look of what our offerings are at the middle high school, and then a technology teacher will move us in that direction. And just because we're taking the technology position off the list as an ask this evening, and we're taking it off the list as an ask this evening because we want to maintain our current staff, we want to have the same number of teachers that we have this year, which next year this proposal is, except that yes, it's .1 short. We're transferring an art teacher to a reading teacher at the elementary school. Otherwise, all other staff is returning. All other programs are going to be in place based on this proposal. And we're going to look and see if we have opportunities between now and the end of the school year to add the technology position. So that's kind of a summary of where we are right now. I don't know, Brad, if you want, I don't know if you want to talk about the, we can go back to the questions too. There's a couple of questions we didn't necessarily address. So one question that came up was that whole concept of the pie chart. And the town says that they, the town consistently, the members, I shouldn't say the town, I should say that, members of the Board of Selectmen continually say that, you know, they fully support the school in terms of, or they support the school at a higher rate than other towns because 70% of the town's funding is allocated towards the schools. And that's, from my perspective, that's not always an apples-to-apples comparison, because different towns make different decisions. We talked a little bit about above the line, below the line. Different towns identify revenue, fixed costs, split between school and town. And different towns identify different fixed costs, so that changes that split between town and school. We feel like a better number to look at is net school spending, because people were asking us about that. They're saying, you know, they're saying, is, what does that mean, 70/30, and is the town really supporting us at a higher level than any other community in Massachusetts because of the 70/30 split? And we feel like a better number to look at is a number called net school spending. Brad's going to talk about net school spending a little bit, and where Carver as a community falls within net school spending.
Yep. So net school spending takes a look at every town across the board in terms of town EQV, which is the value of the town, looks at money coming in for residents of the town, and it puts one formula out there across the board for everyone to be looked upon. So it takes out the, how you break down and how you get to that pie, it takes all that out of the equation. It's just a straightforward DESI equation that looks at everyone the same across the board. When you look at that, we are funded at 23% above net school spending. That puts us right in the middle of the pack in the statewide average. I heard the number of 152 is the district number we're ranked in out of 300, so that gives you that 50%. So again, that's number takes out.
The state average last year was?
The state average was 26%. Yep. We were at 23. But in terms of the total number and where we fall, we're roughly around, right around 150 out of 300 districts in terms of percentage above net school spending. You have some that spend 200% above, you have some that fund below net school spending. Yep. And again, I think we don't want to be one of the districts that spends right on net school spending. You look online, it's Springfield, it's Worcester, it's New Bedford, stuff like that, districts like that that do fund right at that line. But if you look around comparatively, we're right in the ballpark of all of our surrounding towns.
Another question that came up, and we had said, the committee as a whole had some questions in regards to, if we were looking at administrative positions or teaching positions, why were we not considering assistant principals? And I'm wary on this discussion because ultimately, everyone could make a proposal, and my goal this evening isn't to make a defense of, why aren't we considering this position, why aren't we considering that position, why aren't we considering this position, why aren't we considering your position? But there was a little bit of consistency about the ask on assistant principals if we were looking at an administrative position. And a couple people asked a specific question of why Director of Literacy versus assistant principals. And so I guess I just wanted to make a statement in terms of that, my thought process on that. You know, and I don't make this statement to diminish any other position. So I want to say that again, this statement that I'm going to make about the assistant principals both at the middle high school and at the elementary school is not to diminish any other position. But ultimately, assistant principals play a vital role in providing support services for our students on a daily basis, including working with students in crisis, managing student discipline, supporting classroom teachers, managing student conflict, managing bullying concerns and investigations, providing supervision and evaluation of all staff. I won't go off on that particular one too much, but the reality is, we do have a new educator evaluation system, which isn't that new anymore. It does have a higher responsibility in terms of number of evaluations and observations completed for teachers, and the reality is, you have to have people to do those. Curriculum support, program oversight, including programs like PBIS and the Safe and Supportive School Grant, developing, implementing school-wide vision, grant writing, work on site-based councils. Ultimately, the assistant principals on a daily basis are working with our students. And I feel like a reduction in assistant principal position as an administrative position would have a more severe effect on direct student support. And so that's why I could not support looking to reduce an assistant principal position at either the middle high school or at the elementary school. And so that was a question that came to me a couple of times, and I wanted to address that one. I think that covers all the general, I think between the budget presentation and those separate items, that kind of addresses some of the general questions that have been made in regards. So I guess my summary is, in terms of why I'm supporting this budget presentation at this time, is that it is, be short, .1, maintaining a full level, the same number of teachers in the district that we currently have, with the possibility that other changes throughout, between now and the end of the year could actually possibly lead to the addition of a full-time teacher. We're still holding out hope for that technology teacher this year, which would actually have us next year have one more teacher than we currently have, and a new program at the middle high school. It is the elimination of a district-wide administrative position and putting those district-wide administrative supports onto other staff members. I recognize that. It is a change in programmatic service offering by the reduction of the art teacher to .5. So it's shifting that .5 from the art teacher to the reading specialist at the elementary school. But that's just shifting staff based on need of students and what student interest is at this time. It's always tough to have a position go down to .5 because we've had a hard time building positions back, but we have built positions back. We've built back a health teacher, that was a position that was eliminated at the middle high school a few years back, where our goal is to build back a technology teacher with the possibility of that happening this year, if we have the items still in play, fall the right way. And so at this time, based on where we are, that is my, that's my recommendation.
So I'd now like to open up the floor to public comment.
Good evening, I'm Deb Bridges-Waldo, 204 Main Street. Good evening, I'm Deb Bridges-Waldo, 204 Main Street. I'm here again, I was here a couple of years ago for a budget presentation, when we announced here some very painful cuts then, among one would be the fifth grade position and many others. So although it seems like this is a minor staff cut, cumulatively, it is not. So when you add this position, this point one, whatever that math works out to be, you add it to the cuts a couple of years ago, and before that, and before that, and before that, Carver Public Schools has lost a lot of staff members. When I came to this district in 2001, we had a Spanish teacher in the elementary school, we had seven teachers per grade level, which resulted in very effective classroom sizes that were smaller. We are no longer there. So I'm here today, I believe that a lot of work went into this budget, a lot of thought, but I'm asking you tonight, as a school committee, to please reach. Every day I go to school and I ask my students to reach. Reach higher, grasp higher, give it all you've got. I would like for you to reach for our students. I would like you to reach for the staff. I would like you to reach. You do not have to accept a budget based on what the Board of Selectmen is offering. If it doesn't meet the needs of the students, don't play like it does. Please stand up. Stand up. We want to build our district, not shrink it. I sat here a couple of years ago, and we thought that that time, it would be the only time in a few years we wouldn't face this again. And here we are. We owe a debt to our students, to educate them and offer programs that other students in the Commonwealth have. Our children here in Carver have to compete in the workforce and go to college having electives that give them the same background knowledge that every other student has. I am asking you to please reach. And Thomas Jefferson, one of my favorite quotes, and I don't have it exactly quoted, but Thomas Jefferson said, "If you stand for nothing, you will fall for anything." I ask you tonight to stand. There are approximately 107 people here tonight at the height. We will stand with you. Stand at town meeting. Stand. Thank you.
Sure, please do.
I hope it doesn't take three minutes to pick this up here. All right. My name is Gail Nowin, I'm at 1500 Main Street, and I probably have two and a half minutes of something I've worked on for the last couple of days, but I just want to put this in, in response to what's been talked about. Would you cut chemistry classes if enrollment was down? Reading specialist is no substitute for art. Okay. Now, back to where I was. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
For those of you who don't know me, I guess I'm a little nervous. Tried not to be, but. My whole life has been dedicated to my art. Early indications of talent and encouragement from family and later professionally from the public has given me the opportunity to pursue my dream. I don't need to cite statistic of how the arts reach us all. No doubt, there have been numerous discussions about this. I am here on a more personal note. I am here to stress how essential art is, and how absolutely devastating it would be to cut the full-time high school art teacher's job to part-time. Over the past years, our town has had numerous discussions and programs implemented to guide kids through these critical teenage years. Lots of emphasis and money spent on recreation. This is all well and good, but not everyone, not every high school student wants to be involved with sports. Some like mastering a musical instrument or making a masterpiece. This requires the development of individual skills with hands-on leadership from our art teachers. Whereas struggling with emotional disabilities and issues in the autism spectrum may frustrate a student in traditional academic classes, the arts could open up their talent to valuable learning skills. The world's great movers and shakers have been channeling creative skills. Example, Steve Jobs and the iPhone. These skills will serve you well, as life constantly challenges us with problem-solving, contemplation, practice, and patience. Who knew that having the opportunity to study art would help my development in this way? It would be a terrible disservice if a student is interested in art and wants to have the best portfolio to apply to art school and there are missing years in the application. That's just not acceptable, let alone absolutely heartbreaking. If in providing our students with a comprehensive art program, they not only have a competitive portfolio for college applications, but they also have these learned skills. We are missing the boat in today's world if we don't understand and therefore don't support how absolutely beneficial it is to study the arts, to lay down that foundation of the curious and the creative mind as adult development skills. I remember all too well how extremely difficult it is, it was being a teenager. I almost said it is, because sometimes I feel like, oh, well. Art was my lifeline. Self-esteem, sense of purpose, and strong pride in creative accomplishments, I cannot imagine my high school years without it. These characteristics have served me well. I'm sure there are many students that feel that way, too. Please, don't let your budget cuts send these kids to other schools to fulfill this need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emma Gillen, 107 Plymouth Street. I am a junior. I just want to say that you are cutting a program, you're cutting down a program, there's already really like, there's no representation for it. I, I walk through the school, I don't really see anything about the arts, you know? We just got a new field for football, but what about the stuff for the arts? You're cutting something that already doesn't have a lot going for it, you should be building it up, so then you have people actually interested in it. Like, there should be art shows. I've been going to the school for, let's see, sixth grade to now junior year, that's a good amount of time. I've only seen one art show that was an after-school, like, activity, and that was last year. I was part of it, and literally, nobody came to it, because someone put it up, but nobody put anything out to say, hey, there's an art show, an art show at the school. So, if you really are gonna cut something that already isn't presented in any way, that's kind of, it's kind of worthless of a thing to do. Like, you have all these kids that would want to be represented the way that sports in Carver are represented, but none of them are represented in any way. Like, I, there's so many kids that love to draw in that school, you're cutting a program that was probably a good portion of the kids in Carver's high that don't do sports, that don't do football, baseball, soccer, basketball, whatever you want to say. There's so many kids that don't do that stuff, they go to art class, that's their favorite class of the day. That's their favorite thing to do, and you're going to cut that down. It doesn't have anything behind it anyways, nobody ever puts anything into the art program, nobody ever talks about the art program, it's all about the sports program, and everything is about that. Show some support for the arts instead of saying, oh, well, there's this many kids enrolled in it, so automatically we have to cut it down. You should be building it up, it's something that people need in their life. Like, you need culture, you need art, and as an adult, you're not going to go very far if all you know is how many runs someone hit in a baseball game. You should know stuff about music around the world, you should know stuff about art around the world. They should be teaching this stuff in schools, instead of cutting it down, because it's just pointless, cutting down a thing that already feels like it's been cut down for years.
Hi, my name's Doria Godridis, and I live at 164 Main Street. And I just graduated from Carver High School last year. And so I just wanted to talk a little bit about what it seemed like you guys were saying today. So I believe in your budget presentation, you said that there is $63,000 allotted to sports, right? And sports are an elective, they're not something that you have to do, and they're not a class, and you don't get credit for it. So while they may look good and appealing to colleges, not every kid can do them, not every kid can afford to do them, and not every kid chooses to do them. I guess you could say a lot of the same stuff for art, not every kid chooses to do art, and not every kid necessarily maybe has the ability to do art, for whatever reason, but the fact remains that it should be an option. And by cutting a high school art position down to only a halftime position, there's only one high school art teacher, which means that your options for high school art classes are going to be cut down by half. You will only get to choose from three classes per semester offered by this one teacher. And that is not a lot of variety for a subject that colleges are really interested in. I go to a liberal arts college, Wheaton College, in Norton, Massachusetts, and we really push our arts program. That is something that they are looking for, and you have to build up a portfolio to get into any of the art classes. And if you don't take art in high school, you might not be able to build up that portfolio, you might not be able to take those art classes, you might not even get into your college for art. And, so really, what I'm saying is that I hope that when you guys are voting, you take into account the fact that everything should be weighted as important. You can't weight the arts as less important than your sports department or any of the other departments, because it can make a valuable difference in terms of the quality of a student's life. So, that's it. Thank you.
I wrote this when there were more staff cuts, so any of my remarks about staff is in reference to the art.
Could you just introduce yourself?
I am. I wrote it so I'd stick within two minutes and three seconds. My name is Anne Lawson, I'm a retired teacher who taught for 39 years. I do not have children in the schools, but I am a Carver resident living at South Meadow Village. As a senior citizen now, I believe it is my responsibility to support what the children of today and the future need in order to be successful. They will be the ones who I will be depending on to make good decisions about our community and our society at large, for those of us who are no longer in the workforce. The needs and demands on them are much different than the ones I had, and even the ones you've probably had encountered in our school days as students. One can have the best school buildings, the best technology, the best materials, all of which are needed, but without dedicated, caring teachers, developing relationships with their students, the positive effects of the material things will be diminished. The most important factor in successfully educating a student at school is the teacher, just as outside of school, it is the parent. And we need enough teachers so classes are not overcrowded and they are able to give attention to each child. As for curriculum, subjects such as foreign language and art are just as important as reading and math. It takes all the different subjects to fully develop the whole child. And students have different areas of strengths, but they all have potential to learn and succeed in some area. The role of the school committee person in our town is to be the watchdog for education, the protector of our young people's educational needs. I urge you to put forth a budget that our Carver students need and deserve, and in this case, I would be asking for a full-time art. If a middle school has a full-time art teacher, it may, I can't understand how any high school could not have at least one full-time. Don't be the body that makes the cuts. Please stand up for our kids and advocate for them. You will then know in your hearts you did your best for the job that we elected you to do. Thank you for listening.
Good evening, my name is Richard Hughes, 23 Edgewood Road. I'm a junior at Carver Middle High School. I know, up until this meeting, I was told that French would have been cut from our program, and I'd like to talk about how French is important to our program. I've been a student of the French program for about four years now, and I just want to help defend this, keep it from changing and cutting the program again. My first point is on the issue of diversity. Massachusetts has the third highest Haitian population in the United States, and the primary language of the Haitian population in Massachusetts is French or Haitian Creole, which is a French-based language. Recent statistics show that 41,000, or 8.2% of our nation's Haitian population resides in Massachusetts, largely in areas around us, such as Fall River, Randolph, and Brockton. Learning French would help, would greatly help bridge the gaps between our Haitian community and our community at large. As well, during our French program, we have learned much on the French culture, French class has, and still is, teaching us about the cultures of many of the Francophone countries, such as France, Canada, and Luxembourg. From customs and traditions to holidays and celebrations, we have learned about not only the day-to-day lifestyles of the French community, but also significant events, such as the Winter Carnival in Quebec we attended in my freshman year. As well, when colleges say they prefer students to have at least two years of a foreign language, that usually means they want more than two years. To be a competitive applicant at a college or university, a student should have more, more than two years in the same language class. If you cut French, the French program early, now would hurt, now, it would hurt the chances of students taking French from being a competitive choice for these colleges. As well, in the business world, online job postings for bilingual workers in Massachusetts grew nearly 160%, from 5,612 postings in 2010 to 14,561 in 2015. In 2015, jobs for bilingual workers represented more than two-thirds of the job openings posted online by major employers, such as Boston Medical Center, Bank of America, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Over the past five years, job postings for bilingual workers skyrocketed in advertising, public relations, and public services, and we can only anticipate that this will increase in the future. In closing, the French language has been and will continue to be of importance in Massachusetts and in the United States. To end this, if you end this program this year, it would only hurt our students, our community, and our future employment opportunities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Madeline Barrows, and I'm from 6 Crystal Lake Drive, and I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm like really shaky.
That's okay.
I'm just really not good with like public speaking.
It's all right.
But, um-
Take your time.
I feel like very strongly about this, so like I really wanted to speak. Um, so, I'm a junior in Carver Middle High School, and I have been, I've, like, my whole life, I've known that art was kind of like my thing. I'm a very big art geek, and I took as many art classes as I possibly could the second I got into high school, because like, that's just like, kind of like my main thing, like what I really wanted to go for. I was really into it. And I also do sports, I'm in cheer and gymnastics, and like what was said before, I have noticed that there is quite an imbalance between the support in athletics versus like the arts. And I also think that it's just, like, people have said, it's unfair, because options are getting cut down, and it's like, same with the French department, which I'd also like to speak with, like, about, is, I went into French, like going into foreign language is kind of like, you know, being forced to take it. But as I kind of learned and went along with it, I was like surprised to see how much more interested- how much more interested I was in it than I thought at first. And it really opened my eyes to a lot of things, and I never would have expected. I'm currently in French IV, V honors, mixed class, but I'm in the IV division. And it's something that I never really expected, thinking back from my middle school self, to be so into, and also very proud of, to think now. Like, I don't know, it's just if that opportunity was never there, like I would have never have been able to work towards that and achieve that. And it's just scary, kind of, to like, cut things, because you never know that what-if factor, because like with, like, having those options there, you just never really know what kids can do with it if they're putting it just to be forced into. Like, it could always open their eyes and make them see new things, because it is high school, and we're all still developing ourselves and seeing who we are. Like, I have no, I've known that I loved art my whole life, but it wasn't until recently I've really started to like realize how many other things are intriguing as well. And personally, I like learning, and like learning new things, I just find it really interesting, and I want to be able to get as much as I can out of it, and I want other people to have that same opportunity. And I just feel like cutting that is kind of sad, because I mean, personally, I just wouldn't like that, because it's it really, I'm trying to think of the word. It restricts what could happen, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lila Murphy. I'm from 155 Main Street, and I'm currently a senior. And I'm currently in the process of applying to multiple art colleges. So the cutting of the art, like the funding of the art teacher position really means a lot to me, because I've taken all the available art classes at this school, and it's really helped me build a portfolio that has a lot of variation. And it's helped me experiment with mediums that I have never really experimented with before. Like, I've never worked with clay, but I got the opportunity to work with multiple different types of clay when I took three-dimensional art. And if we didn't have as many, you know, art programs, then I wouldn't have such a varied portfolio. And the more variation that you can show in a portfolio really shows to a school that you are capable of, you know, such flexibility and such variety in your work. And it can make you more eligible to be accepted to, you know, said schools. And if we, you know, didn't provide these classes to students, then kids who are more impoverished might not be able to actually get the opportunity to get this sort of variation in their portfolio, and that because they might have to, you know, go to independent courses that are just specifically made for arts, and those come with their own fees. Like, I was looking at just a summer program the other day. That was the Art Summer Program, and the application fee alone was $30, and then the the fee to actually attend was something like like hundreds of dollars, like I think it was like $700 to actually attend. So kids who are more impoverished wouldn't be able to, might not be able to afford that, so they might not have the opportunity to explore their art as much. And I feel like this this defunding of the art program really perpetuates this societal idea that the arts are not as important as something like math or science. You know, you see the stereotype of the starving artist. But, you know, art is important to all different fields, like engineering, geometry, and trigonometry. First week that I had geometry with Mr. Evans, we actually just talked all about thinking visually. And art, like, since I'm very interested in art, I found geometry extremely easy, even though I've struggled with math my entire life. And I feel like if the schools don't provide this, and students could really struggle if they've never experienced, like, really having to think visually. And it also shows up in fields such as carpentry, architecture, web design, graphic design. And some of America's most notable exports, you know, like TVs, movies, video games, websites, advertisements. Those all need artists behind them, and web design is becoming such a lucrative business, because, you know, we're becoming more and more dependent on social media, and if there's, if nobody, if schools can't provide these art programs, then people might not be as interested in going into art. And so they, there might be a shortage of people who are into web design or graphic design, and that could cause bigger societal issues. And so I just think that cutting, like defunding art programs really shows that, like, perpetuates these negative ideas about art in our society, and it can negatively impact society in general by preventing children from really going towards these industries that are so important to American society as a whole, that because they might deem them as not as valuable as something such as, you know, science. Like, they might say, "Oh, well, I kind of want to only be a nurse, but I really want to be an artist." But I might just go into nursing, because being an artist isn't as important as being a nurse. So kids might not be able to make choices that they, like, they might not be able to, I suppose, like, follow their heart, as the saying goes, and they might have to, you know, decide on something that they might not want to do as much, but just because they deem that as more valuable. So I think just this this cutting of funds really shows that, like, really perpetuates the devaluing of the arts, and that will negatively impact society as a whole.
Hi, my name's Lauren Steed, 50 Miles Standish Drive. I'm not an art student, so I just wanted to kind of tie this back to the school choice, because I feel like my classmates have done a great job of conveying the cultural value, just so many values of the art program. But I know you guys have monetary priorities, so to tie that back, if we are opening up, we opened up to school choice, but that also means that students can leave. And if I am a prospective art student in like 9th grade, say, and Carver doesn't offer art, or they only offer three blocks, there's no way I'd want to stay in Carver, because it just isn't a lot of options for me. So I would choose personally to leave, and you guys would lose money on that. And I just think it's foolish to do that, because especially since if you're cutting the art down by like half, I believe you said, then that only gives three blocks for kids to take art. And balance is just so important. So you have kids who are trying to take AP classes and art at the same time. And if AP classes, they fall on a certain block, then you can't take art. You have to choose between art or AP classes. And I just don't think it's fair to make kids make that decision. And my parents asked me that if I could go back, if I would go to a private school or a charter school. And my answer would have been no, because of the lack of opportunities at Carver. There just are a lot more offered in other places. But my answer is, well, my answer would have been yes, that I would leave. But my answer is no, because the relationships I've formed with the teachers. And for you guys to cut some teachers, it's just appalling to me, because they're the ones that make students want to stay, and the ones that are inspiring us. So it just doesn't make sense to me to cut them, when they're the ones who are keeping us here.
Hello, Justin Carpenter, 55 Woodhaven Street. In the proposed budget, it was mentioned that the art program is going to be cut by half because of a lack of enrollment. And from a purely business, non-human, non personal sort of idea, I get where you're going for. I get it, that the numbers don't add up. But from a personal standpoint, we've seen it today. Art means so much to these students. I personally never got into art, but that raises the question, why is enrollment down? Why is sport enrollment so high, and why is the art enrollment so low? Is it really because the Carver students don't like art? Is it really because the majority of us aren't interested? In 4th grade, I distinctly remember the day in which all the instruments for a band was presented during school, and we got to see people play the instruments, and I was awestruck. It was amazing to see all these instruments being played. And I immediately went home, and I was like, "Mom, I have to join the band. That's what I need to do here." And so I picked the trumpet, and I joined the band. And it was hard. I definitely wasn't an immediate prodigy. It's true.
An immediate prodigy.
But I worked through it. I practiced. I did everything I could, because I was passionate about it. Eventually, I did drop it later on in high school. I had some other complications, not related to band. But going back, band enrollment doesn't seem to be a problem. Could it be because of that presentation that got me so interested? That got all these students interested and excited to play? And yes, the initial enrollment was probably much higher than what it ended out to be. People who started band in 4th grade maybe didn't continue to 5th grade. But those who did, it was never my idea that I could be in the band. I couldn't do that. I'm not musically talented. But I was given the opportunity, and I was supported by the school to do it. So when it goes to art, why aren't we giving that opportunity? There are the art classes in elementary school, but I remember going through them, going, "Yeah, I have to do this." Why isn't it being supported and encouraged the same way that sports is, the same way that band was? For the art students, they're passionate about art, and that can't be cut away from them. But in trying to get enrollment up, you should look lower. Start with the younger students, and consider, what can we do to get these students excited about art, to take the chance to jump in and start practicing? If I could go back, I would have loved to start art a little bit later. It's never too late to start, but I would have loved to start later, when I had more time and energy and devotion. I think we should go back and start encouraging the art program from a younger age, so that when they get to high school, enrollment is up, and people are excited about art, and then we have art shows that are magnificent and grand. I think we need to start lower. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Michaela Herney. I live at 19 Snappett Road. So I'm a junior right now at Carver High. I transferred just a couple years ago from Plymouth, Plymouth North, to be more specific. And I just want to talk about what I've seen in the past three, four years from transferring to Carver. That just goes to show how much a disadvantage we're already at, at students at Carver High. To start, I want to say that I know Plymouth North is a bigger school. They have more students, they have more money. But still, they have so many more opportunities for the students than we do at Carver High. So for instance, they have DECA, which is a marketing program for students that want to pursue a career in marketing. They have Biomed, and they have Allied Health for students that want to go into, you know, medical fields. And we don't have any of those programs. You know, we have the basic programs. And I'm not in art myself. I'm not interested in that, but I just want to speak on behalf of all the students that if you cut this program, even if cutting it to half, you are basically giving them a disadvantage for their career. It doesn't matter if there's only, what, 46 students that are enrolled in it. That's 46 students whose futures are not going to be as great as the other students, because they don't have the same opportunities when it comes to getting into college, because colleges are competitive. And they're looking for those programs, and if you don't have them, then you really don't have the same things to offer as the other students. So I just want to say, you know, I can't personally relate to it, but I just think it's completely unfair, that we already are at such a disadvantage as students, that we just have basic programs, that for you to even cut back that even more, for these 46 students, that you know, art may be their life, that's the only thing they're interested as a career, it's not fair to them to be able to, you know, not have the same opportunities. So, thank you.
Hi, my name's Abby Earls. I live at 145 Plymouth Street, so I really only have a quick thing to say. So with the enrollment in students, like, yeah, it's low, and you said that cutting it down to half and having three classes will accommodate all of those students. But when you think about it, we have such a limited schedule. Those students taking other classes, they may not be able to fit into their schedule, those art classes. And only offering three, people like that have taken multiple art classes in the past might have already taken those art classes, so they cannot repeat those classes. So really, you're taking away people's passions and things that they're interested in to take, and it makes school a lot more miserable to them when they cannot fulfill that schedule. So, yeah, thank you.
Stacy DeMello, 70 Cranberry Road. I have a student in the school system that's been, we've been here since 2nd grade. I'm a single mom. She has portfolios of art since kindergarten. A sketchbook every year, if not more. She actually walks herself down whenever she has a study to get a different class, because she doesn't want study. She always wants to take art or anything else to fill her schedule. She's also an honor roll student, and has been since we've moved here, possibly high honors. She's in the drama program, also just came back from districts with the music festival that we had over the weekend, and is also attending SEMSPHA. That's one of the passions. I know a college for her is going to be definitely an art school. And to limit that is also the schedule she's recommended for all honors classes for 9th grade next year. And is also, has struggled with trying to fit art into the blocks, like the other kids were saying. It's not available, because you're in this class, so you can't take this, and now you have to pick something else. I do think that the 46 students that you're saying that are in art, there probably would be more, because there was at one time sports that we also did, and then it wasn't for her. So we moved on to other things, and that's definitely a passion. And I'm sure that there's lots of other kids that would, because it's not presented in a big way in the school, I think would be definitely, you'd add that to that number, no question. If you started actually asking students what they wanted to take, and if it was more available in their schedule during the day. And again, that's one of the classes that is really something that is a passion, and it's shown in, I have sketchbooks eight, nine years worth plus, with all kinds of art, and would take probably two art classes a day if you let her. So I just wanted to say that. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Liam Archer, 21 Wareham Street. I am a relatively recent graduate of Carver Middle High School, and I am currently attending University of Massachusetts Amherst, pursuing a degree in trombone performance. I was never part of the art program when I was enrolled in Carver Middle High School, but the process for which to apply to a music school and to an art school are very similar. And one of the biggest resources to me when I was applying to UMass was the help that Mr. Jeremy Tunis gave me in the process of applying. For degrees in this field, in like a similar art and music, the application process is not the same as towards a regular degree. There's a portfolio aspect for art, and there's an audition aspect for music. And without the resources of a full-time employed teacher, I don't believe that I would have been able to coordinate my auditions and the requirements for them without the extra help that was provided to me. I believe that removing the full-time position for art severely handicaps the chance of any student who wishes to pursue art as a career. As a result, like, do, excuse me, severely handicaps their ability to pursue the career due to the increased challenge in application to schools that specialize in those specific fields. Yeah, that's it.
Hi, I'm Natalie Mosier. I live at 76 Fosdick Road, and I also graduated in the class of 2017. I was also not a member of the arts program, visual arts. I was very involved in theater and band. And I know part of, something that I always, especially with theater, felt was that there was no institutional academic classroom support, or almost none, coming into the theater program. And it pains me to see art heading in that same direction. A half a teacher is A half a teacher is not that far better than a after-school activity with, that was, had to be entirely self-funding, almost. Also, a half-teacher position is going to severely limit the amount of people who will be willing and able to take that position, which is going to limit the school's options for what, which art teachers were capable of hiring. Most people, a lot of people cannot afford to work a part-time position over a full-time position. And then one more point was that while the same number of students are going to be able to be serviced by the art program with a part-time teacher, I'm a math major in college and if half of the math classes were cut, I could have walked out of school knowing only algebra and statistics, never touched calculus. If half of the course offerings in the science department, which I also took a lot of, were cut, I could have walked out of high school not knowing any chemistry or anatomy and physiology, both of which have served me well in college. So in cutting half the art department, you're cutting half of the knowledge that people are able to accumulate in high school, which is cutting half of the potential of the education that someone can get from Carver High School. Thank you.
Thank you.
So as I sat down and listened to what has transpired tonight, I understood my question from earlier on was answered. And going from there, listening to all of these students and prior students talk about art in one form or another brings me to my, what I'm about to say here, in art is culture, art is diversity. And you guys want to bring in other students from other towns. That is great. Plymouth, Wareham, Middleborough, the surrounding areas. I'm from Worcester. That's in likeliness with this, or, you know, both relative. Art, people are artists, people are painters, musicians, muralists. You're going to want that. You're going to need that. If you guys start defunding art, what are they going to want to do? If they don't want to play sports? If they don't want to do anything like that? They don't have art, why would they want to come to Carver? That's it.
Thank you.
I did want to make a comment about the halftime art teacher position. One of the things that came up to my mind when that was proposed was that with the high school rotating block system, I did find that to be a little bit counterintuitive with a halftime position. For those that aren't aware of how that works, there's six blocks a day with seven classes and one, sorry, one class is each dropped every day. So I found that it would be really, really hard for a part-time teacher to commit to a part-time class with that rotating schedule. I'm thinking that if these classes are together, there's a chance that the teacher could be working from 10 to 2 one day and then from 7 to 11 the next day or a couple of days later. And that can be a really hard schedule for someone to commit to, especially if it's a part-time position. So I did want to point that out just because I haven't experienced a part-time teacher in the high school before and I can see how that can have its own issues of implementing that with the current block structure system that they have. So, thank you.
Tammy Johnson, I think I forgot to say the last time, I'm EAPC VP for Carver.
First of all, I'm overwhelmed and humbled tonight. These, the students, this is why I'm here. This is why I teach. This is why I go in every day with a smile and I absolutely can't tell you enough how much I love my job. And these kids are amazing. You totally blew me away. With that said, they said almost everything, point that I had. I want to go back to what we said last school committee meeting is having the courage. All these people has, it takes a lot of courage to sit up here and speak. Takes a lot of courage to ask for something. And at this point, I've been to the last, you know, I've been to many town meetings, but the last two town meetings, it has been overwhelmingly stated how well we are doing financially. If this is how we're going to treat our school district when we're doing well financially, how are we going to do when there's a recession again? I just want you to think about that. And I think it's time, we're not asking for a lot. We're asking to sustain what we already have. We didn't ask a lot through, the teachers here don't ask a lot. We realize where we are. We realize what kind of, you know, Carver is not have a lot of revenue. We all realize that. So I beg, I please, for these children, let's have the courage. Thank you.
James, you're probably going to keep me on a timer. I don't anticipate a big round of applause as other speakers have had. I think the students have been a tremendous advocate for the art program. I kind of wish we had advocacy like that when my daughter was going through school to get even more, you know, more out of the music program and theater program. But unfortunately, and I, you guys have done a tremendous job. I don't envy you at all, especially you, Mr. Neef and Brad. We've had these discussions before of what we can afford as a town. And, you know, I know there's a little difference on, you know, do we give the biggest percentage? Do we meet half the school, the state? What's not taken into that is that the town's gone ahead and we've gotten you a new sports complex. We got you a new roof on the middle high school. We got you the new doors and windows, basically extending the life of the middle high school an extra 20 years to go ahead and save not only the school department money, but save the parents. You know, I've been blown away with the number of people here today, but I represent 1,100 people, not 100, 11,000 people, you know, all the taxpayers in Carver. And unfortunately, if we could get, if I could say, "Yeah, let's go ahead and give you an extra 100,000," the only way that could happen is if we took away the resource officer or laid somebody else up on the municipal side. I mean, it's just not, it would be nice if we could. We can't. If we get some-
Why is enrollment down? Why is sport enrollment so high and why is the art enrollment so low? Is it really because the Carver students don't like art? Is it really because the majority of us aren't interested? In 4th grade, I distinctly remember the day in which all the instruments for a band was presented during school and we got to see people play the instruments and I was awestruck. It was amazing to see all these instruments being played and I immediately went home and I was like, "Mom, I have to join the band. That's what I need to do here." And so I picked the trumpet and I joined the band. And it was hard. I definitely wasn't an immediate prodigy. It's true.
An immediate prodigy.
But I worked through it. I practiced. I did everything I could because I was passionate about it. Eventually, I did drop it later on in high school. I had some other complications, not related to band. But going back, band enrollment doesn't seem to be a problem. Could it be because of that presentation that got me so interested? That got all these students interested and excited to play? And yes, the initial enrollment was probably much higher than what it ended out to be. People who started band in 4th grade maybe didn't continue to 5th grade. But those who did, it was never my idea that I could be in the band. I couldn't do that. I'm not musically talented. But I was given the opportunity and I was supported by the school to do it. So when it goes to art, why aren't we giving that opportunity? There are the art classes in elementary school, but I remember going through them going, "Yeah, I have to do this." Why isn't it being supported and encouraged the same way that sports is? The same way that band was? For the art students, they're passionate about art and that can't be cut away from them. But in trying to get enrollment up, you should look lower. Start with the younger students and consider, what can we do to get these students excited about art? To take the chance to jump in and start practicing? If I could go back, I would have loved to start art a little bit later. It's never too late to start, but I would have loved to start later when I had more time and energy and devotion. I think we should go back and start encouraging the art program from a younger age so that when they get to high school, enrollment is up and people are excited about art and then we have art shows that are magnificent and grand. I think we need to start lower. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Michaela Herney. I live at 19th Snappett Road. So I'm a junior right now at Carver High. I transferred just a couple of years ago from Plymouth, Plymouth North being more specific. And I just want to talk about what I've seen in the past three, four years from transferring to Carver that just goes to show how much a disadvantage we are already at, at students at Carver High. To start, I want to say that I know Plymouth North is a bigger school. They have more students. They have more money. But still, they have so many more opportunities for the students than we do at Carver High. So for instance, they have DECA, which is a marketing program for students that want to pursue a career in marketing. They have Biomed and they have Allied Health for students that want to go into, you know, medical fields. And we don't have any of those programs. You know, we have the basic programs. And I'm not in art myself. I'm not interested in that, but I just want to speak on behalf of all the students that if you cut this program, even if cutting it to half, you are basically giving them a disadvantage for their career. It doesn't matter if there's only, what, 46 students that are enrolled in it? That's 46 students whose futures are not going to be as great as the other students because they don't have the same opportunities when it comes to getting into college because colleges are competitive and they're looking for those programs. And if you don't have them, then you really don't have the same things to offer as the other students. So I just want to say as, you know, I can't personally relate to it, but I just think it's completely unfair that we already are at such a disadvantage as students that we just have basic programs that for you to even cut back, that even more for these 46 students that, you know, art may be their life. That's the only thing they're interested as a career. It's not fair to them to be able to, you know, not have the same opportunities. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Abby Earls. I live at 145 Plymouth Street. So I really only have a quick thing to say. So with the enrollment in students, like, yeah, it's low and you said that cutting it down to half and having three classes will accommodate all of those students. But when you think about it, we have such a limited schedule. Those students taking other classes, they may not be able to fit into their schedule those art classes. And only offering three, people like, that have taken multiple art classes in the past might have already taken those art classes, so they cannot repeat those classes. So really, you're taking away people's passions and things that they're interested in to take and it makes school a lot more miserable to them when they cannot fulfill that schedule. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Stacy DeMello, 70 Cranberry Road. I have a student in the school system that's been, we've been here since 2nd grade. I'm a single mom. She has portfolios of art since kindergarten. A sketchbook every year, if not more. She actually walks herself down whenever she has a study to get a different class because she doesn't want study. She always wants to take art or anything else to fill her schedule. She's also an honor roll student and has been since we've moved here, possibly high honors. She's in the drama program, also just came back from districts with the music festival that we had over the weekend and is also attending SEMSPHA. That's one of the passions. I know a college for her is going to be definitely an art school. And to limit that is also the schedule she's recommended for all honors classes for 9th grade next year and is also, has struggled with trying to fit art into the blocks like the other kids were saying. It's not available because you're in this class, so you can't take this and now you have to pick something else. I do think that the 46 students that you're saying that are in art, there probably would be more because there was at one time sports that we also did and then it wasn't for her. So we moved on to other things and that's definitely a passion. And I'm sure that there's lots of other kids that would, because it's not presented in a big way in the school, I think would be definitely, you'd add that to that number. No question if you started actually asking students what they wanted to take and if it was more available in their schedule during the day. And again, that's one of the classes that is really something that is a passion and it's, it's shown in, I have sketchbooks eight, nine years worth plus with all kinds of art and would take probably two art classes a day if you let her. So I just wanted to say that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Liam Archer, 21 Wareham Street. I am a relatively recent graduate of Carver Middle High School and I am currently attending University of Massachusetts Amherst, pursuing a degree in trombone performance. I was never part of the art program when I was enrolled in Carver Middle High School, but the process for which to apply to a music school and to an art school are very similar. And one of the biggest resources to me when I was applying to UMass was the help that Mr. Jeremy Tunis gave me in the process of applying. For degrees in this field, in like a similar art and music, the application process is not the same as to, as towards a regular degree. There's a portfolio aspect for art and there's an audition aspect for music. And without the resources of a full-time employed teacher, I don't believe that I would have been able to coordinate my auditions and like the requirements for them without the extra help that I was, that was provided to me. I believe that removing the full-time position for art severely handicaps the chance of any student who wishes to pursue art as a career as a result, like, do, excuse me, severely handicaps their ability to pursue the career due to the increased challenge in application to schools that specialize in those specific fields. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Natalie Mosier. I live at 76 Fosdick Road and I also graduated in the class of 2017. I was also not a member of the arts program, visual arts. I was very involved in theater and band. And I know part of, something that I always, especially with theater, felt was that there was no institutional academic classroom support or almost none coming into the theater program. And it pains me to see art heading in that same direction. A half a teacher is not that far better than a after-school activity with, that was, had to be entirely self-funding, almost. Also, a half-teacher position is going to severely limit the amount of people who will be willing and able to take that position, which is going to limit the school's options for what, which art teachers were capable of hiring. Most people, a lot of people cannot afford to work a part-time position over a full-time position. And then one more point was that while the same number of students are going to be able to be serviced by the art program with a part-time teacher, I'm a math major in college and if half of the math classes were cut, I could have walked out of school knowing only algebra and statistics, never touched calculus. If half of the course offerings in the science department, which I also took a lot of, were cut, I could have walked out of high school not knowing any chemistry or anatomy and physiology, both of which have served me well in college. So in cutting half the art department, you're cutting half of the knowledge that people are able to accumulate in high school, which is cutting half of the potential of the education that someone can get from Carver High School. Thank you.
Thank you.
So as I sat down and listened to what has transpired tonight, I understood my question from earlier on was answered. And going from there, listening to all of these students and prior students talk about art in one form or another brings me to my, what I'm about to say here, in art is culture, art is diversity. And you guys want to bring in other students from other towns. That is great. Plymouth, Wareham, Middleborough, the surrounding areas. I'm from Worcester. That's in likeliness with this, or, you know, both relative. Art, people are artists, people are painters, musicians, muralists. You're going to want that. You're going to need that. If you guys start defunding art, what are they going to want to do? If they don't want to play sports? If they don't want to do anything like that? They don't have art, why would they want to come to Carver? That's it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Morgan Brown, 51 Meadow. I did want to make a comment about the halftime art teacher position. One of the things that came up to my mind when that was proposed was that with the high school rotating block system, I did find that to be a little bit counterintuitive with the halftime position. For those that aren't aware of how that works, there's six blocks a day with seven classes and one, sorry, one class is each dropped every day. So I found that it would be really, really hard for a part-time teacher to commit to a part-time class with that rotating schedule. I'm thinking that if these classes are together, there's a chance that the teacher could be working from 10 to 2:00 one day, and then from 7:00 to 11:00 the next day or a couple days later. And that can be a really hard schedule for someone to commit to, especially if it's a part-time position. So I did want to point that out just because I haven't experienced a part-time teacher in the high school before, and I can see how that can have its own issues of implementing that with the current block structure system that they have. So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tammy Johnson. I think I forgot to say last time, I'm EAPC VP for Carver. First of all, I'm overwhelmed and humbled tonight. These, the students, this is why I'm here, this is why I teach, this is why I go in every day with a smile, and I absolutely can't tell you enough how much I love my job. And these kids are amazing. You totally blew me away. With that said, they said almost everything, point that I had. I want to go back to what we said last school committee meeting, is having the courage. All these people has, it takes a lot of courage to sit up here and speak, takes a lot of courage to ask for something. And at this point, I've been to the last, you know, I've been to many town meetings, but the last two town meetings, it has been overwhelmingly stated how well we are doing financially. If this is how we're going to treat our school district when we're doing well financially, how are we going to do when there's a recession again? I just want you to think about that. And I think it's time, we're not asking for a lot, we're asking to sustain what we already have. We didn't ask a lot through, the teachers here don't ask a lot. We realize where we are, we realize what kind of, you know, Carver is not have a lot of revenue. We all realize that. So I beg, I please, for these children, let's have the courage. Thank you.
Alan Dunham, 11 Ricard Street. James, you're probably going to keep me on a timer. I don't anticipate a big round of applause, as other speakers have had. I think the students have been a tremendous advocate for the art program. I kind of wish we had advocacy like that when my daughter was going through school to get even more, you know, more out of the music program and theater program. But unfortunately, and I, you guys have done a tremendous job, I don't envy you at all, especially you, Mr. Neef and Brad. We've had these discussions before of what we can afford as a town. And, you know, I know there's a little difference on, you know, do we give the biggest percentage, half, do we meet half the school, the state? What's not taken into that is that the town's gone ahead, and we've got you a new sports complex, we got you a new roof on the middle high school, we got you the new doors and windows, basically extending the life of the middle high school an extra 20 years to go ahead and save not only the school department money, but save the parents. Now, I've been blown away with the number of people here today, but I represent 1,100 people, not 100, 11,000 people, you know, all the taxpayers in Carver. And unfortunately, if we could get, if I could say, yeah, let's go ahead and give you an extra 100,000, the only way that could happen is if we took away the resource officer or laid somebody else up on the municipal side. I mean, it's just not, it would be nice if we could, we can't. If we get some more development in towns, we get more income, because that's what the problem is, we don't have enough income. And we've talked about this before, you know, joint meetings between the school committee and the board of selectmen and Mr. Neef and Brad. But we have to deal with what we've got right now. I feel that, you know, I think it'd be great if we could get, keep the full-time art teacher, but unfortunately, that's the decision you guys have to make because you, unfortunately, you're stuck with a budget that we've got as much as we could. In fact, we're giving you a higher percentage this year than we did last year. So, I can say, I don't expect a round of applause, and I just don't want to have them thrown at my back, but, you know, how we got here, I'm not going to say. I have my own opinions, but that's just it, they're my opinions. I think our teachers in our town do a tremendous job, the bus drivers, the custodians, everybody does a great job through the school department, and you guys do a great job representing the parents and the students of the school. And for that, you guys need to be commended, but those are just my thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you.
See no one else moving to the mic?
One thing I just want to clear up is school choice. I know there's a lot of questions on that. Regardless of whether or not we adopt school choice or not, a student can go to a neighboring district who offers school choice, and can go actually anywhere in the state, to be honest with you, that allows school choice. So, the vote for us doesn't stop someone from going out.
All right, so now it's time for committee discussion and vote.
I will, I will propose a motion to approve a school district budget, $23,840,433.
Second. Okay, motion made, second. Discussion, please.
Well, I'll start. So, we got to this point, a lot of you have been here for the past few meetings, and you saw how dramatic things have changed over the course of time. To get to this point, I want to thank Scott and Brad for their efforts getting here. I know, and I thank my committee for all the work we've been doing behind the scenes to get to this point, where we talked even today about how do we make this process going forward for next year and the year after that, a little bit more so smoother, because I feel like there was a lot of lead-up as you had people coming up with information that probably was just always a little bit late. So, you know, I'm glad they came, I really appreciated the young people that were willing to come up, spoke extremely articulately, and really, it said a lot about them. And it said a lot about our school, that we have these type of kids that are willing to do that. Getting to, getting here every year that I've been doing this, it is just such a tough situation because you look at it from, you can look at it from just blindly your heart with compassion, and that's the hardest thing, I mean, not to do, because it screams for it. And then you look at it from the numbers. So, those two things, I just pull at you in each way. So, I just want you to know, like, all the emails and everything, that we tried to get those questions answered for you, tried to get everything through Scott, and tried to, you know, make sure that everything was crossed off the list. So everybody was informed, everybody had everything, we feel like we have everything. So when we make this vote, just know that either way, if you're for us, against us, wherever we go, this is, this is an extremely difficult position. And I'll let the rest of my committee speak, but I'll be thankful for tomorrow. I will, because getting through this is extremely difficult. Anybody else want to speak?
I echo a lot of what Andrew had to say. I appreciate all of the efforts and all of the hard work that has gone into reworking the budget. I'm glad to see that was taken into consideration that they're trying to level the service in terms of just the .1 teacher reduction. I do understand what the change in art would be. I did question it. I did want to understand more of how the rotating schedule works and the blocks drop, to understand what the true impact would be on students. So I want to thank everyone that has come, everyone that has advocated, everyone that has emailed, everyone that has reached out. We so appreciate your input and your feedback, because it is our role as school committee members to vote for what we feel is in the best interest of the students and the staff. And it's not always an easy position to be in, and you have to make really hard decisions. And none of us want anything to be cut, or anyone to be cut. But we all have to vote with our conscience, our conscience, vote with what we feel is in the best interest of our students and our staff. So I just want to say thank you to everyone that came and that spoke up. Thank you to my committee members, for everyone who was put in lots of hours trying to get somewhere where everyone can be, I don't want to say happy, I think we'd all be happy if we had more money to add back more programs and more staff and more electives to our district, but just to a place where everyone's working together. However, given that, I do feel that there have been enough cuts to our school district. And I hope that all of the feedback that has been provided tonight is taken in, and everyone will vote with their heart and with their conscience and truly in what is in the best interest of our students and our staff.
Well, I'll echo much of what Stephanie said, thanking everybody for coming tonight and for reaching out to us. There was, all the information was greatly appreciated. And I just had a couple of questions, actually, of Scott and Brad before we go forward. Can you answer for me right now, the amount of students in the art classes that would be affected right now? How many are in the classes now?
Well, right now, there are 46 students.
And per class?
In high school art. I don't have the breakdown of each individual class, it probably varies in range in terms of it. We did have 67 odd students sign up for art next year.
Sixty?
Sixty-eight. So when we look at, and the other piece you have to look at right now is, right now, the art teacher is doing, was responsible for the VHS course, so they were not teaching that section. So they were only teaching four sections, or, and those four, four sections broken off is eight sections, because it's one each semester. So the reduction goes from actually eight, eight sections of offerings to six sections of offerings. So it's a total reduction of two sections of offerings. And people did bring out legitimate points of concern of, you know, theoretically, the number of students who signed up for art next year would be able to take those art courses. I want to address that people said the offerings were going to be cut, there's no intention to cut offerings, the offerings would be the same, and based up on the sign-ups, students could take those courses. The problem on that would be the rotating schedule and maybe choice. But those are problems students face anyhow, because they might have to make a choice between an art class and an AP class. Those are sometimes choices that hap, those choices occur on a regular basis every single year. Those choices would be amplified, or there's a possibility of them being amplified, because next year, this year, we have eight sections, and next year, we'd have six. So that's, that is two less sections within the rotating schedule, which would cause a complication in terms of possibly students being able to get into those courses. But in terms of the numbers, the intention is not to cut a course that's been offered. The intention is not to, you know, the intention is that every student signed up for a course would be able to enroll in that course through the usual process with, with the issue of the part-time, in terms of the rotation and, and that possibly causing an issue. In terms of staffing, that same issue is, it could be problematic. There are, you know, so there are, we have had .5 positions before at middle high school, someone brought that up, there have been, they've existed, they've been there, people have chosen, people make all different choices in their life and what is best for them. And we all know that. You know, for some people, a part-time position works great, for other people, a part-time position doesn't work great. You know, so those are individual choices people have to make. And so, do we believe that we'd be, in terms of the staffing, we believe, we believe we'd be able to staff the position?
Okay, so the loss, there wouldn't be a loss of program, there would be two less sections.
Two less, and, and in terms of, I want to reiterate that piece in terms of saying, the reality of the rotating schedule in two less sections may make, may cause some course conflicts for students.
No matter what happens here tonight, and this is loud, I'd like to see a, an effort to make art and any of these classes, but especially art from what we're hearing here tonight, much more available to kids in different pathways, because I do believe art is important. Just get back to the budget numbers real quick, from what I can, I can see here, the shortfall we have was 234,985, and then we had a minus of $30,398 for health insurance, $25,000 for school choice based on current enrollment, $65,622 of director of literacy restructure, $41,524 for the .5 art teacher, and school choice based on additional slots, $72,441. And that brings us to...
That brings us to the number of...
To the 23.
Proposals that there was just made.
23,844,33. So that takes care of our shortfall. All right. I do want to say, no matter what happens here tonight, we are a governmental body of the Carver School District, we don't have the luxury of just saying, just do everything, we only have so much money to, to work with. And these are the realities of being in these positions, that we can fund things or we, sometimes we have to make cuts. And unfortunately, since I've been here, also, as Andrew said, we've had too many cuts. The first year I was here, we had a $1.2 million cut, we had a, we had a makeup, which was awful. But just on the art side itself, I, I really, what these students all said really echoed with me. I mean, I, I drew one of the pictures from my junior high yearbook, you know, I was a, I was kind of a hack artist myself. But like I said, you still have to come up with a budget number to make things work. And I do agree that I want to see more money coming in from the town and more development from the town. And the town has helped us a great deal over the last few years, afford things that we couldn't afford, to be honest, we just couldn't afford them. And I don't think, since we've come up with the shortfall here, I don't think that this is the hill to die on right now, because I think it's going to be worse in the next few years coming up. And I hate to say that, but I, that's my prediction. I think we're going to, we're going to be facing worse budget shortfalls or structures, and hopefully, we can have, have money come in before that happens. But I think we still need to work together as a town and not pit one against each other like it had been in the past. So that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, they are gale, please, if you don't mind, thank you. The comment?
The session is over.
Yes, thank you. So, I think there's been a lot said tonight, and I, and I want to thank all the students who got up and speak today, because that's hard to do. And, and it took guts to get up here in front of people and say what you really felt and think. And there are adults that have a huge, difficult time with that, and these students felt passionate enough to get up here and speak about what they truly believed in. And that's powerful, and that's meaningful. We all talk about a lot of what we're doing, and you know, we've, we've meant a lot about this process. And I do want to commend both of these gentlemen, because as a lot of information flew around the past couple of weeks, when you came to this meeting, I think some of the information that you got was different than what you've heard. And a lot of that is because they have worked countless hours creatively trying to come up with ways to meet the best situation they can. And these gentlemen have to work with the town members on a regular basis. So although going after the town for this and for that may seem like a great idea, every day that they have to go and work with them, then becomes a different kind of day. And maybe other things are cut back, and maybe they're not so welcome to share this or to give that. And this town has created that overdraft fund for health insurance that is truly going to help us when that time comes. And that town has created that overdraft fund for special education, which we need and rely on in order to be there. But this town also knows that it has to do a little bit more. And, and although I've been a huge proponent of everything that's going on, what's the difference if, if art was kept full? Forty-one thousand? So, I mean, I don't know the policy and how it would work, but Stephanie, it sounded earlier like you were sort of like, this is a yes or no situation, and I don't necessarily agree with that. I don't know why we can't ask for that 41,000 to make that situation mean and to make everything flush. I know you don't want to hear that. And I know that that's, that's going to make a situation for you, but I really think that, that these people have spoken, and it's not 11,000 people speaking. it's not eleven thousand people speaking, but it's the people that we're here to defend, and that we're supposed to be protecting and defending. It's not anybody, it's the students. And these students came very impassioned, and gave a very convincing presentation of the importance, and, and I am afraid, and my biggest concern that I will tell you was stated by you, was that, once we cut this, it's really hard to start to build that back.
Mm-hmm.
And what are we really saying when we do that? That this doesn't matter right now because the numbers aren't there? I, Justin, if you're, if you're still here, Justin's presentation of the fact that we need to do more to promote that is the perfect example of what needs to start happening. We need to start invigorating that program and doing that, because that's part of the pathways and what we're looking to do, to broaden what we want to do as a school. And, and I clearly can't sit here and do anything, but I would generously entertain a motion that might adjust something to meet the position that we need to, and although it may not be the town's number, I feel it's an amount that's not asking too much from the town to meet something that we need to do. That may result in things in the next couple of years, but we're going to need to deal with that when that time comes. Right now, this impassioned voice has convinced me to request that, although I cannot promote it or do it.
Somebody want to do it?
Yep, I'm just trying to come up with a new number.
Well, I believe you have a motion and a second.
But that motion could be amended.
Right, that's why, it's just, we need a motion to amend it.
We would make a amendment and then have to vote on that amendment.
Right, that's why, I was just, just pointing that out.
Brad, are you going to check my math?
Twenty-three, eight ninety-one, nine fifty-seven.
I see, I see, I'm glad, I came up eight eighty-one. So twenty-three, eight ninety-one.
No, it is eight eighty-one.
You want a double check line for me?
Oh.
And what, what is, what's the proposal specifically?
So give that, give that specific number again.
To add back the art teacher and the director of literacy, or just the art?
Add back the art teacher.
So it's twenty-three million, eight hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred fifty-seven.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to amend the budget number that we are proposing for the FY twenty budget to include a full-time art teacher at the dollar amount of twenty-three million, eight hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Need a second on that motion?
No, second is made. The motion's made and seconded. Would you, would you like to make some improvement?
Well, the only comment I'd like to make about that is, James, as you said, I would be unhappy about that, I'm certainly not unhappy about that.
I didn't, I did not mean to imply that at all.
I don't want anyone here thinking I'm unhappy about that.
No, no, that's not...
Clearly not my position on this.
Presented on a potential...
Yeah, so I just, I just wanted to address that, piece of that, so if, if the committee went forward with this position in terms of restoring the art position and maintaining the full level of teaching staff, I would one-hundred percent support that.
I guess I meant by that, Scott, we are, we are parents, we're you, we're representatives, we had, this isn't our career, our life, our job, we have jobs and careers, we're, we're just here representing the best that we can. On a day-to-day basis, you have to, you have to work with and deal with those situations, and I guess my point was, I, I...
Yeah, I turn, so I, I will, I will...
It puts you in a place that might be different than you want to be.
I will, I will, I will address that, I mean, ultimately, Andrew, don't...
No.
Sorry, sometimes I get emotional, Andrew gives me a hard time because I get emotional.
I will have to.
That was my, my point, my point was for him to give me a hard time because I get emotional.
You can be really empathetic.
Sorry, I should, that was probably inappropriate, but maybe, made me laugh a little bit, so I won't get emotional. Is, you know, I, I've clearly said from the beginning, the last thing I want to do is cut any position, but I, I'm a huge, huge proponent and a believer of the concept that we need to offer as many programs to students as we can. It's a direction we're trying to move in, so we've had a lot of discussion recently about possible pathways. I know Michaela brought up biomed at Plymouth North, I mean, that's a program we're actually interested in possible, that we're actually in discussion process of looking of, doing up a program called Project The Way that has a biomed program, and, and, and instituting that. Now, that, that's part of our career pathways vision, I don't want to go too far on that because I want to, we want to make a logical presentation of that for everybody, but I want to know, tho, those are things we're considering, because, and we're not considering those because we, we get in discussions about that, if we're considering that because we want to keep students, it really has nothing to do with keeping students, yes, we want to keep students, but we're offering those programs because we believe long-term they're this change we're looking to make, which we need to have more discussion with the middle high school teachers about that change, and I think the April faculty meeting is going to be coming up, and we're going to be doing those things before we make more formal presentations to the school committee, but ultimately, the goal there is to do what's best for our students, and that's why we want to make those changes. It's not because we want to keep kids from going to charter schools, or keep kids from going to that school or that, or whatever school, it's we want to do the best for the kids in Carver. I want to do what's best for the kids in Carver. I've been in this community for twenty-six years, I love this community, I want to be here for nine more years or longer, and, and, and I want to support everybody in this room, because there are great people in this room, there's a lot of great people in this room who I work with every day, and I'm always impressed by what they do, day in and day out in their classes. Our students tonight were tremendous, I know we've echoed that a lot, but it was unbelievable, the level of presentation of our graduates from Lee, I looked at the psych, I could see Liam and Natalie in the back, and look at them.
Yeah.
From our, from our graduates to, to our current students, everyone did a great job. Sorry, I shouldn't have pointed out one or two students, as many students to the audience, but ultimately, you know, that, that's impressive, and, and those are the types of things that we're, we're supporting here, so I'm rambling. But, but also, I don't want anybody to have the message that, that my goal was to cut teacher, teachers. My concern, and, oh, I'm, I'm just a huge believer in transparency, and sometimes maybe too much transparency, but my concern is, and I think Andy said it, and it got a little negative ripple from the crowd, and, and that, is that...
It's to be expected.
You know, any kind of, anything that's done now, our goal is not to take money from another department, so any kind of funding that we do to support this position is going to come from one-time funding. That one-time funding doesn't change the issue, whether it's general stabilization, whether it's capital, it's coming, if, if, if the board of selectmen decide to support this forty-one thousand dollars between now and town meeting or not, and it's a different number at town meeting, it's, it's a short-term solution.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's what Andy was talking about, there's a larger structural problem. Right. Which the town is trying to address, and I believe that, and we have been trying to work with the town, and it's, it's that dual, it's a dual role of mine to work with the town and try to improve those situations, and give us every best opportunity we can to have the school's budget to be in the best place it can, but also supporting the students, and those things come into conflict at sometimes, and I've been struggling for the past two months with that conflict. My concern is that, that unless we solve those structural issues at town, whether it's bringing in more revenue, considering an operational override in the future, that somewhere along the line, those things are going to have to come to task. And I want to garner our support at a time when we're at the most critical need. And so my balance on this whole thing has been, when is that critical need? And I, the community's saying that critical need is now, and it's forty-one thousand dollars, but the concern is that two or three or four years down the road, that critical need may be more money, and, and, and I was trying to think long-term of, when are we going to try to solve that, that structural problem? Because our problem is structural. It is a, it is a revenue problem, it's not that the town has money that they don't want to give us. It's, I, so I believe that, I, but I don't believe the town's holding money and saying, I don't want to give that money to the school. They're saying we don't want to use one-time funds, because one-time funds don't solve the structural problem, it just creates another structural problem next year.
Next year.
And I think that's the concern, is the structural problem has to be solved, and we're not in the position to do that tonight, but I think as a town and as a community, we, and I do believe the board of selectmen have been working actively to try to solve that structural problem by bringing more revenue to the town. They're trying to build up their Route Forty-four project, they're looking at different solar options, and there's a lot going on with solar to bring more revenue into the town. And if we had the opportunity to increase our revenue resources, maybe we would be able to fund the school budget appropriately with, and maybe build back some of these programs. If we build back some more programs, like a biomed program, maybe long-term, we do retain some more students and have a few less students go out to charter schools, which brings more money into the school district. I mean, but we have to, the fear, my fear was that the forty-one thousand dollars this year doesn't solve the structural problem, it just leaves us with that problem going forward. So, I want us, the committee, if the committee wants to support the forty-one thousand dollars, I want to support the forty-one thousand dollars, I want full programs, I don't want to see reductions, I'm not certainly upset that James made that motion. So I, 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 or James made that suggestion, and Stephanie made that motion. I've rambled long enough, I don't know if it made any sense, but, that's, those are my thoughts.
I'd just like to comment a little bit on, on what you said, and, and again, to thank you, because we, we have worked hard, and, and we have sat with the town as well, and, and we have worked with the town, and the town has grown in what it's given us from where it started. This is not a dry process, we meet often, and we discuss often, in little groups and big groups, and we keep trying to come to better conclusions, and you're exactly right. This is, this is pushing off a problem to another year, and I agree with that. But here's, here's what else I would say to that. As of now, you've taken that tech position out, and we need that. And you want to talk about art, offer graphic art, you'll probably have a hundred kids trying to get into that class. There are lots of things that we need to do to start moving forward, this is just a step to make.
That's all part of our discussion.
Exactly, and, and where we're continuing to go. And I know the town has made mention of things that can happen next year too, and I hope those windows stay open, because when you say the place to make a stand, I don't think forty-one thousand dollars is a stand, I think it's just a step, and, and I think it's a step that we're able to handle as a town in a way that maintains something that to me is important right now, that, that we maintain what we've got. And, and these gentlemen, regardless of what's gone on, inherited a one-point-two-million-dollar deficit. They did not create it, they were not part of it, they both walked into it, both of them, and they have done a fantastic job over the past few years, trying to negotiate their way through that with as little loss as possible, and no positions were lost last year, none. And that's the year after a one-point-two deficit. What we're looking at now is some restructuring, and there's more to go on, and there's other things that can be done, and maybe there are ways to find money to make some other things happen right now, but to me, the passion that was here, and our role as representatives of the school, had pushed me to the position where I, I think that that money is worth asking for, to, that the town can find a way to make that happen, even if it's one-time funds, then that's a problem, I, don't, do not be naive thinking we may be in the same position again next year. I can't promise you that won't happen.
Mm-hmm.
But for right now, I believe the passion that, that is pushing to maintain this, and, and I support it, because I think it is the right thing to do for the students of Carver. And that's why I put that suggestion out.
James, what does it affect our end-of-year vision with the technology teacher? So, if, if we were to, at that point, hold on, here we are, if we were not supported for the forty thousand dollars, does this nullify, would we then allocate, would the committee then allocate that forty thousand dollars to a full-time art teacher over any pursuit of a September technology teacher?
It might.
I'm, I'm asking, like, is that...
It might.
Can you... So, process-wise on that, let's say there, you're, so right now, I think you're making requests for me to reach out to the town administrator to see if there's any way that we could solve the forty-one thousand, five twenty-four. If that were not to be solved, then it would have to go to the town meeting floor, if the town meeting did not support that number, and support the school budget with that additional forty-one thousand. And then we said there's other things still in play.
Yeah.
And so we could come back to you in May and say, these things happened, this, we had this staff changed, it's freed up thirty-two thousand dollars, and, or, we've had these two staff changes, or we had fewer students go to, okay, so we have one less student at vocational school, we had one staff movement, and now we can, we were going to put that money towards a technology teacher, that would come back to the committee, and the committee in May would have to say, we don't want to see that money go to the, we're, we're, we're opting to maintain the art program in full prior to looking to expand a technology teacher. And that would be the committee's choice in May, after that happened.
In May?
If we had those changes, we don't know, we don't know.
We're talking in terms of if that happens, yeah.
James, through you, the town's already voted their number, correct?
Yep, I'm sorry, Mr. Dunham, Mr. Miller, they have voted their number.
So, our next step is to vote a number, that means if we don't agree on a number, and we're going to ask the town administrator to look for forty-one thousand dollars, that means we can't vote a number tonight, correct? Is that right?
I have no idea.
You, you could...
Because we're going to be waiting for an answer.
You could do one of two things, you could choose to not vote a number tonight, and we could set another meeting, and, and ask if, if the town's...
That won't be the town meeting date requirement.
Right, probably not, I don't know when the next board of selectmen meeting is, I don't know what their process is in terms of that.
So...
I don't know, I don't know, Mr. Miller, if you want to address that issue, since you're here?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, first, let me just thank the audience and for the comments that I've heard tonight, it certainly opens up the doors that there's a lot of passion that's in, in the town, and there should be for education. And, you know, Carver has always stepped forward and funded education to the extent that it can, and fortunately, with our call fire department, we're able to move those excess funds into doing that. You guys have a tough decision tonight, because there's only so much revenue, and you have to balance that, and, and it, I don't wish, I wouldn't want to be in any one of your shoes, nor in the superintendent's shoes, but there has been a lot of work back and forth between the town and the school to fund additional programs and find other ways of getting money into the school budget outside of the financial policies that were approved by town meeting, which calls for a certain percentage going to the school and a certain percentage going to the town, and that's fixed. So that's the number you have, that's the number that, that we've used for multiple years. In regards to your question tonight on voting the budget, there have been times where the school committee has voted a different budget than the financial policies, and the selectmen are obligated in the informational section to put the school committee's request in there for town meeting's notification, but it's the selectmen that set the budget based upon the financial policies. And for the last couple of years, the school committee has met those numbers, which again, are the town's financial policies. Three years ago, you voted a different number, but the financial policy number still went in there. I can't say what the selectmen will do going forward, but I would encourage you to vote a budget tonight, so we can move forward with town meeting on April twenty-second. There is a bylaw that says all numbers need to be in there thirty days prior to town meeting. You certainly could schedule another meeting between now, and I guess it's the, the twenty-second of this month, to give you the thirty days, so you, you do have a room if you want to do another special meeting. But, you know, again, what I would just caution you with too, is that there's been a tremendous amount of cooperation between the school and the town to try to improve the relationship that happened in the years past. As we all know, we built a new elementary school, we've redone the middle high school, we've redone the sports turf field, we've gone forward and set up all these additional programs so that you don't have to lay off teachers mid-year by having those funds available for special ed, and that has saved, you know, lots of jobs for that, that you're all aware of, and those things would not have happened without the cooperation. If we're going to be looking at, I think I heard the number, forty-one thousand dollars, that's not going to be one-time money, that's going to have to be operational money if that goes forward, so something's going to have to be cut. Some other position, some other program, somewhere, somehow, some, some other operational fund is going to have to be cut, because then, you know, then you're, you're just pushing the, the problem onto the next year by using one-time funds, which again, would be another conflict with the, the financial policies. You know, town meeting improved those financial policies, they've got us into the good position that we're in right now to run a very efficient and effective government. When you run a very efficient and effective government, you're able to get as much money as you can into the schools as we're doing with these other programs outside of the split, which we're doing, and everybody knows that, and, and I appreciate you mentioning that, Mr. Chairman, because the selectmen have worked very hard on that. But as the superintendent mentioned, we're hitting a critical crossroads right now. You know, for the last twenty years, our population in the town for school kids has gone down. When you look at the next trend for the next twenty years, population's going down. The further you get away from two thousand kids in the school district, the more difficult it is for you. When you have teacher contracts that, that were passed, and those add cost every few years, and you're going to have to deal with that down the road, and that's going to be a bigger burden. So that's why, and, and the finance committee recognized this, as the superintendent mentioned, and after town meeting, they're going to start to focus on trying to figure out what the long-term solutions are. I do know that they want to ask somebody from the, the school committee to be part of that, even though it's the finance committee, which is an independent body, they'd like to get a representative from the finance, from the school committee, and a representative from the board of selectmen, as they start to look at those long-term plans. But we are coming, and we are today, and we're going to be tomorrow, and we're going to be in the next few years in a crisis until something changes, and we all need to figure out what that change is going to be. And it's nothing different than your own individual home budgets. You only make so much money, and out of that money, you have to figure out how to repair your house, how to pay for your clothes, your food, your car, and repairs, and if you're lucky, you can take a vacation. Is that vacation going camping in the backyard, or is that vacation going down to South Carolina or Florida? Those are the things. Those are the things that you have to figure out what's in your budget. The town budget is really nothing different than that, there's only so much money to go around and you guys have the tough decision of figuring out within your allocation, what is it you want to do? Now, keep in mind, you have $22, $3 million and you're looking at $41,000 out of that. Maybe there's other avenues that can be done in there and I think as I heard too, that over the next few months, there may be other options that something may change. Healthcare insurance may go down and you may look at that and you may find the money that way. But just asking for more additional money is your right to do, but it's not going to solve the problem. Can I answer your question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
A statement?
Sure, please.
I think it's wonderful that you asked for the other $41,000 and quite frankly, as a citizen, if the town can't find that, I'm a little nervous. If I bring that down to my home plan, maybe you're looking for four grand for something. If I can't plan appropriately for something like that, it just makes me nervous. However, that being said, the school committee's position is to care for the children and the teachers. And I think town issues are town issues and that's why we have selectmen and that's why selectmen get hired and they hire people to help them figure out their costs and how they operate and manage. I'm just not necessarily sure that's a school committee function. I think the school committee function exactly what we're doing here. We are either approving a budget or denying a budget or adjusting a budget. So I'd kind of like to just move forward with that, if I may.
I think to that point, we've had a lot of discussions about this and the town has worked with us a lot and I've heard a lot of opinions that have come at us the past couple of weeks and, you know, this isn't fully funding our education. There's still so many pieces that are missing from what we need to do. We're not where we need to be. But if as a committee, we were just to take the number that the town gave us, we wouldn't be needed as a committee. They'd just give him a number and he'd figure out what to do. Or if he were to just say, hey, this is what we need and bring it to the town, then we wouldn't be needed as a committee because he would just take a number and bring it to them and they'd have to vote whether yes or no. So this committee does a lot of work back and forth in trying to come up with the best plan and if this town deems that this committee isn't necessary, then it could abolish it to do that and work straight that way. But to me, that's not what has happened and I think there have been, to Mr. Miloski's point, some really good things that have happened because I got to see that school built and when I walked in here and saw what my kids had to go through, it was just awful. I had no idea it was like that when we moved here. And neither one of them got any benefit from it because they're in the middle high school now. And thank goodness, we got a new roof and new HVAC and all those things that were needed in that building to at least make it last long enough till maybe we can afford a new one. And those new fields and all those things that have occurred have taken a lot of cooperation and a lot of work to get those things to occur. So I don't want this in any way to appear like we're trying to contradict the selectmen, but to Gina's point, you're exactly right, our privy of what responsibility is is different. It is different. And if we can't make that work, then I'd have to agree with you, I'm not sure. Why not? I think it's not going to solve any problems, but I think right now, it's going to make things better and I think that's the step that we should be looking at and taking. And although it may not be the direction we were originally heading, it just seems like the right thing to do as a committee member and as a citizen and as a parent right now. And that's why I requested that to happen.
All right, so if we vote a number tonight, so the process is going to be, just so everyone knows, the process, and Mr. Miloski can probably confirm this, the process is going to be, we vote a number, the selectmen voted, we voted a number, that means we have to go to town meeting floor, someone's going to have to make a motion for an amendment on town meeting floor, that means the town is going to have to be able to choose between the two differing numbers. So just so everyone knows, because we vote a number tonight, doesn't mean it's passed.
Totally not.
It's just what we...
Yes.
Whatever we decide to do, that's going to be what we recommend. I mean, that's what's going to go, you know, in the warrant. So that's the process. Is there some other process, is there something I'm missing? Is Mr. Miloski there?
Yes, if I could correct your statement.
Okay, yeah, good.
As I mentioned, the, three years ago, the school committee voted a different number than what was in the financial forecast. That was not in the article, Andy. That was not an option to vote for. Because the financial policies state what the number is by the percentage. It was duly noted in the informational section that the school committee voted a different number. But it was not given as a choice that you could raise the number up above what the financial policy stated.
So what's the process if we vote a different number tonight than the town recommends?
The selectmen have the different number that you've recommended and they'll make duly note of that. Again, if they follow what they did three years ago. It does not mean that it automatically gets put up for a vote at town meeting because it's different than the financial policies that town meeting has approved, which are the only policies the selectmen can follow. And that has that percentage number in there.
But ultimately, the town meeting has a voice.
It's a number not to exceed, so again, I'm just going by...
So anybody can make an amendment to change those policies, anybody can make an amendment to change the number. There is, it can't be that there's not a way for it to happen. So obviously, if the school committee makes this decision, then the school committee will pursue its recourse to ensure that the number has a hearing at town meeting.
Sure, and I'm not trying to argue, I was just being very clear, I was citing how it was done three years ago when a different number was presented and that's up for the selectmen to do that. That's not me saying that, I'm just quoting three years ago when a different number was presented by about $21,000, I think the number was, and the number that was voted was $21,000 less because that was consistent with the financial policies. And I guess the other, the other component that I'd like to make to is that, you know, the superintendent makes a recommendation to you guys as to where they want to run programs and I think I heard him say tonight, he may come back to you later on this year and say, I'd rather do the technology person versus this other position. And that's where the school committee comes into play is saying, well, no, we think this other position is more important than the technology person. I mean, that's the role where things are at there. So, I mean, you guys have a huge role in this to represent the community and listen to what those comments are and then to help from a policy standpoint, make those adjustments under the master general laws that superintendents are allowed to run the district by.
The reason I ask that is no matter what happens here tonight, I'm an advocate for transparency and just the process being known and I'm thank you for correcting me on that. Actually, that night was kind of a blur for me that, you know. But, I mean, I think just having people know the process and knowing that there is an avenue at town meeting floor to change things, but I just think all these, everything needs to be considered before we take a vote.
Mr. Chairman, directly to Andy's point, what's the best way to get through this is to come to the next board of selectmen meeting because we have not voted on this whole budget thing yet, is to come...
I thought you had a number.
...to board of selectmen to try to get that extra number.
Duly noted, thank you, sir.
You guys didn't vote a number?
That's your easiest path.
You didn't vote a number yet, Alan? I thought you did.
No.
I was, there was only three people at that meeting. It's my understanding that they were holding off all the final votes for the articles until we had a full board.
Well, see, I didn't know that. All right. So maybe, yeah, thank you.
Nothing else, even if they had, there's nothing that says it couldn't be revoted again.
When is your next meeting?
Next Tuesday, I think.
So...
Not tomorrow, a week from tomorrow.
Is that...
After the solar meeting.
The 19th.
The 19th, do you, well, I mean...
The 19th, so I wouldn't recommend everybody coming in because we're not going to have the room.
Yeah.
But I think two representatives along with Scott and maybe Brad.
Well, we don't want to show more than two anyway. We can't.
Okay. And the other thing is, plus you've got to get it through the chairman to have it approved, but I'll put in a plug for you, how's that?
Well, I mean, I think that changes things a little bit, you know, I mean...
Well, you know, if you look at the warrant too, you've got to understand that this is a very difficult decision to make right now too. We also have a bus on there, we put a bus on there every year because we own our own bus, that's $100,000 we're looking for there. It's not just the school budget that the school is getting money for. The town has also picked up a grounds person because we're now sharing grounds work, right? So they're taking a position that initially we had in our budget that we were going to have to cover, they're also taking that to cover. There's a lot of cooperation that is going on within those circumstances. But Alan, we will show up, there will be a representation there.
How it goes, I can't guarantee...
And I appreciate that, but I also think that we're at a place right now that, I don't know, I need to, we really need to think about the way we're presenting what we're doing.
I realize that and I'm going to be honest with you, I need a week to calm down.
Thanks.
Because, no offense, I kind of felt blindsided. So, and I understand why you did it, but, you know.
Thank you, sir.
When we had, thought we had an agreement and then, but, you know, and like I say, I understand it and it's only, like you say, it's only $41,000, but...
$41,000 is $41,000.
That's why it's good to do things, that's why it's good to do things in open meeting and discuss things.
Yep.
So let's move the point then, please.
Let me vote.
We are voting initially on the amendment and then we would vote on the final budget.
Well...
Or is it a vote with the amended?
Yes, a vote with the amended.
I mean, if we're going to attend their meeting and look for the extra money for them, I mean, should we be voting a number now?
Yes.
Should we be supposed to put it up?
No, we need to vote a number because if we don't, as suggested by the selectmen and the town administrator, we should vote a number tonight.
So the number might, if we vote a number, the number might be the same at town meeting as the selectmen's if they agree with us, is what you're saying?
Yep.
Potentially, or it could be different.
Right.
Your number you approve tonight will be posted, whether it's... Right. Yep.
Whether it's approved or not, it will be posted.
And the effects on the technology position, Scott, are that we would meet again in May...
Or June.
And that's where we start looking longer term, Andrew, we start looking next year at really establishing something bigger and working to get what we need more. I don't know. I, you know, I know Mr. Dunham felt blindsided. I, this was, I made, this is not something that's well thought out, I came up with this and I feel I support it.
You're going to do what you feel.
I'm sticking with my perspective.
Do we need to...
So the motion with the amended budget has been motioned and seconded.
Do we want to say the number again?
I seconded.
Do we want to say, I want to say the number again, Stephanie?
The abundant, yeah, abundant, oh my gosh. The amended FY20 budget number is $23,881,957, which would include a full-time art teacher versus a .5 art teacher for the high school.
Motion remains seconded, any more questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed?
Nay.
So three to two.
The town meeting. Exactly.
All right.
Moving on.
We have some other budget items, moving on, I mean, budget items, sorry, we have other budget items. We have some other items on our agenda.
Yeah, I know.
Do you want, you want to take a five-minute break?
Is that possible?
Chair, Mr. Chair?
It's quarter to ten.
Sure.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So I guess, do you need a motion to adjourn or is this for you to do a five-minute break?
All right, man. Can I call this meeting back to order, please, so we can finish our business?
All right, I will try to be...
Feel free.
Try to hit some of this information quickly. All right, so communications, day on the hill is coming up. Let's go into my background agenda, find where I am. Okay. And the day on the hill for the Mass Association of School Committees Annual Advocacy Day at the State House, this year it is Wednesday, May 1st. The day includes an agenda of speakers that outline the Mass Association of School Committees' key points of advocacy, a luncheon, and time for you to schedule meetings with your local representatives. Please let me know if anybody would like to attend, so if you can let Gina and I know, she'll register us. So I don't think we've had a school member go in a while, so I know it's a full day from work, but if someone had the opportunity to go.
I will go.
Wednesday, May 1st.
Yep, it's on my calendar.
Right, and related to that, and I mentioned this earlier, I also want you to be aware that the legislature is holding a public hearing on Friday, March 22nd on three school finance proposals that are before the state legislature, including the Promise Act and the Governor's Proposed Budget. The Mass Association of School Superintendents is recommending that all superintendents who are not receiving aid beyond the minimum increase attend the hearing. So as we've talked about in other meetings, the Carver School District right now, under the proposals that are before the legislature, would only receive the minimum aid increase, which is, you know, approximately for us, about $32,000. So I do plan on attending that meeting and representing Carver in terms of one of the communities. Really, the goal is to say that whatever legislation gets passed this year needs to include the idea that all communities need to benefit from that legislation. So that will be our point of advocacy as we go forward on March 22nd, so I'll be in Boston for the day on that day. Personnel updates, are you okay if I just start going through items?
Yes.
Please do. So we did have a few retirements that were factored into our budget. Deb DiSwaldo, teacher grade five, who was here this evening. Dana Calderon, our math teacher at the middle high school. Walter Cole, custodian at the middle high school. And Walter already started his retirement. And Paula Shaw, teacher at Carver Middle High School, English teacher. We do have a transfer to announce, Michael Schultz has been named as the interim principal during Mrs. Holly's maternity leave. And then we also have some new hires, we have Diane Dennan is a long-term subpar professional. We have a new food service worker, Cheryl Dolan, at the elementary school. We have a new, sorry, I did that backwards. Diane Dennan is a long-term sub at this elementary school. Cheryl Dolan is a food service worker at the middle high school. Rabab Rashid is a long-term sub special ed teacher at the elementary school for maternity leave. So that was our personnel update for the past month. Dropout data, and we'll actually probably talk about this more at our next meeting. There is going to be a presentation, I know early on, we had a discussion about the CAP-TAP program and our belief in terms of how that program's been operating and that maybe we had the staff to have possibly have a reduction of that program, but our dropout data report recently came out and it's a, it's an impressive number to look at. So dropout data for 2017, 2018 school year was recently released. Dropout rate is calculated by dividing the total number of students in grades nine through 12 who left school during any given school year. So dropout data is just a straight number of, here's your high school students that started the year, of those high school students did any of them drop out of school. You know, last year, it's, I'm trying to say a way this, I'm trying to say this in a way that doesn't sound a little weird because obviously we don't want any students to drop out, but last year, we only had one dropout at the middle high school for the entire school year. So our dropout rate for last year was .2% and we can see that it's been a pretty consistent decrease the last couple of years, .7 and .2. I do think part of our reduction in dropout rate has been the development of the CAP-TAP program at the middle high school. It provides an alternative pathway for students to reach graduation, that's one of the goals of the program. And our next, in our April school committee meeting, we do plan to have a presentation by some of the staff and Kim Dwayne, the school adjustment counselor, on the CAP-TAP program and the services it's been offered. The school committee approved the introduction of that program two years ago and so they're going to come back and talk about that a little bit. And so I do think that, you know, seeing that only one student dropped out last year is really based on the support services we're offering to students at the middle high school through the CAP program, through all, through all our apps, CAP, MAP, TAP, I missed one, and GAP. So that those programs have been supportive of our student body and assisting them in reaching graduation. I don't know if there's any thoughts on the dropout data if I want to move on to the next topic.
I like the numbers.
Yeah. I like the trend.
All right, so then that brings us down to school calendar. So the proposed calendar for the 2019, 2020 school year is linked, is linked above, Meredith is showing it. It's similar to the calendar we followed this past year. We're proposing to have three professional development days for teachers prior to the start of school, Tuesday, August 27th, Wednesday, August 28th, and Thursday, August 29th. Students would start school after Labor Day on Tuesday, September 3rd. There'd be an additional professional development day on Tuesday, March 3rd, which is late. But the reason why that is, is March 3rd, believe it or not, is Super Tuesday for the[1751.03] But the reason why that is, is March 3rd, believe it or not, is Super Tuesday for the 2020 presidential primary. So we either have to close school that day or have a professional development day because it is Super Tuesday. The holiday break, this has been a point of contention, uh, for some people who, that we've talked about in terms of the calendar, and the committee can certainly weigh in on this. Uh, the holiday break is funny. This is the year where Christmas falls on a Wednesday. So what do you, some school districts, when Christmas falls on a Wednesday, takes a two, full two weeks for breaks. Um, we're not, I'm not proposing that. The proposal is the holiday break would begin on Monday, December 23rd and Wednesday, January 1st. Students would attend school on Thursday, January 2nd and Friday, January 3rd. Uh, otherwise, the calendar is fairly similar to past years. Really, the, the real difference is in this calendar compared to this year is, uh, not doing the two weeks of Christmas and then also having that professional day on March 3rd, which is Super Tuesday. As a point of interest, um, if the committee did want to entertain the two weeks at Christmas, it would make our last day of school June 18th without snow days. Um, so we can, we can do what the committee would like to do with this. You can think about it a little bit. We can bring it back next meeting. We can have a motion on it. Uh, I don't know if you want to consider that at all in terms of the school calendar. Can you ask Meredith to scroll down, please, to the audience? Thanks, Meredith.
Do you guys have access now?
We have Good Friday.
It's not coming up for me.
It's not loading.
Oh.
Do you want to tell me what month or what section?
Just wanted to see the bottom.
Why is that not loading?
A little fa, uh, back...
December? You want to see December?
November.
November, okay.
Keep going. The other, the other change I should mention is that Good Friday is a day, we did give a Friday, right, because we changed that in the contract. Previously, in the teacher's contract, we were required to go to school on Good Friday. And actually, the contract actually said, Good Friday will be a half-day of school. Uh, and in the last negotiation, we agreed to not, that Good Friday would be a day off. Uh, so Good Friday, which the, next year happens to fall on the Friday before April vacation. So Easter is the first weekend of the vacation week, so Good Friday is the Friday before. And what we did is we added an early release on before that. Historically, the April early release day for teachers is they get to work on their evidence for their evaluation system. It's their personal time. Um, so we felt like that made sense to actually, uh, for people who really, if they wanted to get away really early, could leave Thursday afternoon, uh, if that opportunity would be there for them.
Question, James, through you? So I just want for clarity, the teachers would have the same number of personal days? They would just move them to make up the beginning of...
Professional days.
Yes, what did I say, personal? I'm sorry.
That is not changed. And actually, this, it's this, it is the schedule we followed this year because, um, we were actually, we were concerned that the building wasn't going to be ready.
Right.
And so we wanted to build in those extra professional days. And then we surveyed the staff, uh, and the staff, on average, voted about 65, 35 in favor of having the professional days before the beginning of school. Uh, I got feedback, obviously, we did not survey the entire community. We did get some positive feedback from parents about schools starting on the Tuesday after Labor Day. Uh, and so since the teachers liked the professional days up front, the parents seemed to weigh in that they liked to start after Labor Day, uh, that it wasn't, uh, it does, really, it doesn't actually change where those professional days used to fall. It doesn't lengthen the calendar at the end.
Okay.
Is, if that's really a question?
Yes.
It does not.
It does not, and then the same amount of, um, professional development day?
Correct. There's no change in the number or amount of professional development days. Uh, you know, the March day is a little late. Generally, you prefer to do professional development day more towards the front of the school year, so teachers can implement things that they use. Uh, but it just makes sense because, uh, for two reasons. One, it's a day we'd have to take off anyhow because with a, I think this upcoming presidential primary election will get a, a good voter turnout.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, and then the other piece of that is other districts, our take it as a professional day, so Meredith and the assistant superintendents group has started to talk about doing some regional professional development, where we do some regionalized offerings with, uh, a number of communities taking that day off as a PD day. What's your question, Andy? The Super Tuesday is...
March 3rd.
March 3rd. Do we have November 2020 in here already? Is that on here?
No, no, this, because this is not... No, we only go to June 4th.
That'll be the next year. Oh, that's right, okay. Wonder why I couldn't find it.
There is actually, historically, the professional day, historically, the professional day that we're offering on March 3rd would be November Election Day. This year, there is no November election. It's an off-cycle year. There's no, town doesn't do their elections on that day. They do those Saturday in April. There's no state elections because it's an off-year. There's no presidential. There's a, there is not actually a November Election Day this year.
Scott, what was the, the general consensus from the staff as far as the, the two weeks for Christmas?
Ah, I was going to go there. I know Brad was...
That, that we did not weigh, and we did not ask the staff about the two weeks of Christmas. So we just, that, that was discussed at the administrative level only. Uh, we did not do a staff survey on that.
I, I want to continue on that a little bit, but Meredith, did you have something?
I was just going to say, if people are having difficulty seeing the calendar on their computer, there's this little button at the bottom and you can go bigger like this, or you can go smaller. So I just, as a...
It wasn't initially loading, though.
Okay. But now people have access?
Yep.
Okay.
So back to that two weeks at Christmas discussion. All right, the only, the only, the only alteration would push the last day two days further.
It would move the last day to the 18th. Uh, my concern about that is that's without any snow days.
Right.
Uh, you know, so if we, well, the reality is, the most snow days we've had in the last couple of years is five. This year, we've had one. Hopefully, that's our last one.
Right, yeah.
Uh, so maybe it's a light year next year and everybody's on the 19th. I think those days at the end of June, um, become long. That's my, that is my personal opinion. Uh, the administrative team was split on this issue. Uh, it was, it was a contentious discussion. I was about to giggle about that a little bit. Uh, but ultimately, it's the will of the committee. If the committee, you, if you want to get different, if you want us to get more feedback on that, or if you would just want to weigh in, uh, ultimately, whether we end school on the 18th of June, the 16th of June, um, doesn't make a specific difference to me.
Um, well, again, through James, and a question, and perhaps Brad, you'd have the answer on this. So if the school is essentially closed for two weeks, is there savings financially for heating, electricity?
Absolutely.
So is that something you could perhaps get?
To, to boost it up for the two days at the end, right after Christmas is kind, you're boosting it up for two days and then going back down again in the weekend. So there's definitely a savings to do that. Um, and in the same sense, I would say academically, you're not going to achieve a lot on those two days after Christmas break for Thursday, Friday being back. But in the same sense, you're also not going to achieve a lot on the end of June. So boosting it to the end of the year isn't gaining any academic time either way.
It was, it was a close vote, but the recommendation of the administrative team was the schedule that's proposed, obviously. There's probably not a lot that goes on in, in June anyway. I mean, it just, the kids are looking to get out.
There's not, man. Either, you know, MCAS testing is over, the main sensor testing is over, the weather's warm. It, it's not really a, an academically productive timeframe.
Yeah.